Welcome, everyone. Good evening. It's Wednesday, December 16th, 2020. It's PM. This is a regular session of the Pacific Grove City Council, calling the meeting to order. Ms. Kendall, would you please give us a roll call?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Tomlinson?
Present.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Padore?
Here.
Councilmember McAdams?
Here.
Councilmember Coletti?
Here.
Councilmember Emilio?
Here.
Mayor Peake?
Here.
All are present, be assumed webinar.
Thank you. I'll turn to Councilmember Tomlinson. Would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Turn to council for any adjustments to our agenda. And seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move that we approve the agenda?
We have a vote, please.
Mayor Peake?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
Councilmember Padore?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero to approve the agenda.
Thank you. We'll now turn to our Chief Police, Kathy Madalone, to make a presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of staff, and the members of the public. I'd like to say a few words about Commander Lakin. He's worked for the city for the past six years, and I've had the pleasure of working with him for the past year and a half. We definitely have had that special New Jersey connection. Rory is a great guy who treats everyone with respect. He's very loyal and gives his all. Over the past six years, he's worked for five different police chiefs, so for that, he should get a special award. But all kidding aside, the commander was able to adapt to different leadership styles and played a vital part in keeping the agency together and on a course during the numerous changes in leadership. It's a true testament to his character. The commander developed many great connections within the community as well as within the department. He served with pride and integrity, and he will be missed. So on behalf of the women and the men of the Pacific Grove Police Department, we want to present him with a framed, hand-drawn sketch of our police department's 1940s car. It'll look something like this. I don't know if you could see it, something like that, and a certificate of service. We wish him the best of luck in his future and hope he enjoys his retirement. Thank you so much.
Commander Lakin, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you, sir. First, I would like to thank my wife, Toni, and my sons, Michael and Benjamin, who took the leap of faith to move away from their only home in Texas to a whole new world in California, fulfilling my dream I had since I was a young boy. I would like to thank all of the people that helped make the city of Pacific Grove a great place to live and work. I would like to acknowledge my teammates at the Pacific Grove Police Department, Chief Kathy Madalone, Mo Amar in the Chamber of Commerce, Ralph Porres and the PGUSD team, Tony Prock and the Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association, our other city partners in the city manager's office, Public Works Finance, and the Monterey Fire Department. I would like to give a special thank you to Judy Fehili for my lunch, our monthly lunch outings, Marjan from Cedar Street Times, and Katie from China House for their friendship as well. I would also like to acknowledge our small business owners that work so hard to keep Pacific Grove the hometown that it is. I appreciate this opportunity to have spent six years of my nearly 28 years of law enforcement, public safety service in Pacific Grove. I look forward to my next career and whatever that takes me. Thank you, sir.
And Commander Lakin, I want to say thank you so very much for your years of dedicated service to the community. I know you've really been loved and recognize that you received from the Chamber of Commerce Employee of the Year Award very recently, just as a recognition of that fact. Thank you so much. I'll turn to Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. Commander Lakin, I don't know if you can hear me okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. I have to say, when I first met you, I was on the streets of Lighthouse campaigning, and you were so welcoming. And even though I've only been on a couple of years, sometimes it feels longer, but it does, we've been able to, it feels like we've known each other for years, just, and I appreciate your professionalism, of course, along with the department, but I mean, for yourself, it's been absolutely great to know you, and I'm sure you're, I don't know if you're going to still be around, but good luck in all your future endeavors, but I really appreciate your friendship and professionalism.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you so, so very much. And we'll now turn to our second presentation, which is a mayor's proclamation honoring Meals on Wheels of the Monterey Peninsula. And I'm going to read it. It's not very, very long, and then we'll have a chance for others to speak as well. Whereas since 1972, Meals on Wheels of the Monterey Peninsula has provided nutritious meals to frail, elderly, and disabled adults, and its mission is to nurture the whole person, body, mind, and spirit. Meals on Wheels Monterey Peninsula has delivered over 200,000 meals to over 600 homebound clients this, in this past year. Truly remarkable. It has helped seniors maintain their health and independence, preventing unnecessary falls, hospitalizations, and/or premature institutionalization. The volunteers of Meals on Wheels of Monterey Peninsula are the backbone of the program, delivering the meals and then providing daily check-ins on their clients. They deserve the recognition for all these contributions that they've made and will continue to make, not only to the city of Pacific Grove, but also their surrounding communities. Now therefore, I Bill Peake, Mayor of Pacific Grove, recognize Meals on Wheels of the Monterey Peninsula for contributions to our community and honor its programs, seniors they serve, staff, and volunteers. And for those folks that don't know where Meals on Wheels of the Monterey Peninsula is, I suggest you head over to the Sally Griffin Active Living Center near Lover's Point. And well, I guess today is, these days is not a good day to pop in, but later on, after the pandemic has eased, please stop in and see all the wonderful programs that they have ongoing. And now I want to turn to our, the folks from Meals on Wheels of Monterey Peninsula. Mr. Jacob Schaefer, would you like to say a few words? And do we have Christine Wingi, the Executive Director, as well?
I do see them both.
Hello, Mayor Peake. This is Jacob Schaefer. I'm the Development Director at Meals on Wheels. I want to say thank you to the whole council who recognized our work. You know, we've been around since 1972, as you've said, and there's been a lot of people who have helped us along the way. I'd like to say thank you to our, our staff, both current and past, our board members, and the thousands of volunteers who have helped us carry out our mission for nearly 50 years. So this is a tremendous honor and recognition for the agency, and we're very appreciative to all of you for that.
Thank you.
And Christine Wing?
Wingi, yes, hi. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Go. Thank you, thank you. I just want to echo everything that Jacob said, and then also to thank Councilmember McAdams for nominating us to receive this award, and the rest of the council for recognizing all that we do and all we have done. And most of you know, I was just recently appointed to this position, or actually hired, sorry, for this position, as the new Executive Director, and I succeeded our longtime and beloved past Executive Director, Vivica Lor. And I don't really want to have this happen without acknowledging all of her wonderful work for the past 30, gosh, was it 32 or 34? I think Viv's even watching potentially here. And then, of course, all the drivers, all the volunteers, everybody that, all staff, everybody that helps us do everything we do every day. It's been a tremendous output of effort this year, and we don't see it slowing down anytime soon, but we've risen to the challenge, and I think we will continue to do so because of all the help we receive. So thank you. Thank you for thinking of us. Thank you for honoring us, and we greatly appreciate it.
And we appreciate you. Councilmember Emilio?
Yes, thank you. Prior to the pandemic, I did go down several times to the Sally Griffith Center. It's unbelievable what you have done down there. And I know with the Meals on Wheels, it looks like when I went into the kitchen with Vivica at the time, it was like a factory. Everybody was working all together. It was just outstanding, along with the exercising going on in another room, and the vegetable hour. Seniors came in and picked up stuff, but it's really amazing what you guys, what you have all done at the Sally Griffith Center and Meals on Wheels. Thank you.
Councilmember McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor. And I just, I really wanted to thank all of the staff and volunteers at Meals on Wheels. They definitely deserve some recognition. Throughout COVID, they have continued their services. At the beginning of the pandemic, you know, they did lose quite a lot of their volunteer force, because a lot of their volunteers are older and in the high-risk population. So, but they just kept going and keep going. You're doing great. I'm sure everyone is exhausted, but I hope that this recognition gives you a little pep and some inspiration, and thank you so much for being a part of Pacific Grove.
And thank, thank you again. We'll now move on to council and staff announcements. I'll turn to our city attorney, Mr. Laredo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to you, to council, to members of the public and the staff. The council did meet in closed session at 5:00 PM. There are two items on the agenda. I'll address the second item first, and that was conference with legal counsel concerning the Monarch Heights Homeowners Association lawsuit against the city. That's a dispute involving zoning definitions applicable to the mobile home park. Due to the press of time and the length of discussion, the earlier item, there was no substantive discussion on this matter. That is going to be continued until January of next year. On the other item was real property negotiations. This concerns portions of Sloane Avenue and portions of Ocean View Boulevard. These are pieces of property that are proposed to be used by the proposed American Tin Canery Hotel Project. And the council was given an opportunity to discuss and ask questions concerning the background of the real property negotiations, did review a proposal that was made by the project developer, Comstock, did provide comment on that, and gave negotiating questions and direction in general to the city manager, but there are sufficient questions and the need for further refinement. The continued discussion of this matter will be held in early 2021 in January at a dedicated closed session. There was no specific reportable action taken on either matter, and that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And do we need a closed session report out from last week? We had, we had discussions with labor negotiators at the tail end of our regular session.
Thank you for reminding me. There was a closed sessions on each of the organized units and confidential employees, city manager, and your finance staff did provide background with respect to labor negotiations. Questions were asked, but no, no specific reportable action was taken. I believe that's going to be a part of an action item this, later this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harvey, do we have any staff announcements?
At the risk of upsetting my staff, I don't believe we have any. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And council, do we have any council announcements? Councilmember McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to thank the Fire Department, Police Department, and the Recreation Department for Santa. Last night, he drove throughout our city and visited neighborhoods, including ours in Del Monte Park. And my family and neighbors, we very much enjoyed seeing Santa, and it was nice to see lots of smiles. So, thank you.
Councilmember Padore?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, on that note, my children also participated in the Forest Grove Elementary recital, which was wonderful. They, there were more than 300, actually more than 300 folks attended, so they had to actually increase the Zoom count. So, but it went really, really, really well. I also have another slightly different topic here. I am aware that the council had asked Councilmember McAdams to put together a working group for the Equity Empowerment Initiative, and I was, I don't have any information on where the working group's activities are at this point. I would appreciate it if the council could receive some kind of a progress report or maybe an update at some point. As to who is in the working group, what kind of items is this working group being involved in? Is there any timetable? I know the next council meeting is in January. So whenever, at any given point, if there are any updates, I would, I'd love to see them. Thank you.
And I have one announcement. The folks that are interested, and I hope there's still a few folks interested in our boards, commissions, and committees, the deadline for applications to be sent to our city clerk is this coming Monday. I believe it's the 21st. So please take a look at, at the opportunities there to help serve your community. And if there's no other announcements, then we'll move on to general public comment. Do we have anyone wishing to speak?
Yes, Mayor. Daisy Valdez, you have the floor.
Welcome.
My name is Daisy Valdez. I'm a resident of Seaside, yet I, I guess I spend a lot of time in Pacific Grove. I am commenting on the investigation towards the police officer that was put on leave back in May for having far-right, anti-government decals displayed on his truck, and recently has posted a Black Lives Matter meme, end quote, on this site that allows hate speech. Now, I want to know, what is Pacific Grove doing to reinforce that all people, especially black, indigenous, people of color, how are they protected in Pacific Grove? I want to know why he has been put on leave, and there has been no, nothing, no movement since May. This man has a three percenters decal on the back of his truck, a far-right wing militia group who is racist. I think that a city that has the majority of white or Caucasian residents should be doing everything it can to protect the minorities, and that is all.
Barbara Martinez, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you, everybody. Hi, I'm Barbara Martinez. I am principal of Pacific Grove Adult Education. I'm also Director of Safety for the school district, and I just wanted to take the floor and take a few minutes to echo what Chief Madalone said with regards to Rory and his retirement. Mr. Lakine has just been, just a wonderful partner to work for with PGUSD. He is 100% behind students. Kids first would be a motto that I would put behind his name. He believes in community policing and building positive relationships with the community, and I just want to say congratulations, Rory, on your retirement, and I will miss you. The district will miss working with you. And then again, also to give congratulations to Meals on Wheels, we also partner with Meals on Wheels with the adult school, and we just want to reiterate congratulations to them as well. And then finally, yes, Forest Grove did have a sing-along, holiday sing-along last night. It was fantastic, over 300 attendees. And so congratulations to Buck Rogeman and everybody who participated and all the families who were able to attend. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kay Lobo, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I also want to comment on the length that it has taken for this investigation to go on regarding this particular malicious cop on the force. It's unfortunate that, as being such a progressive county and cities within this county, that we still have to be mediated on how we should carry ourselves in 2020, leading into 21. We all are very progressive here, and I know a lot of people in Pacific Grove. My mother lives in Pacific Grove. I've dealt with several people, and I know that Pacific Grove does not want to be known as a community that fosters hate, racism, and doesn't accept all its community members, particularly its younger generation. Because as we know, our younger generation is very progressive, and it's very outspoken about what is going on in our county, and it's very important that us as adults need to realize and take a look at that example and follow that, because we are being put on a pedestal right now, and people are going to look at us to see what our move is going to be. And do we want to fall under history over and over again on the wrong side? Because Pacific Grove has a very long history of racial tensions from a very long time, and that is a narrative that needs to change, and it needs to change from the bottom, from the concrete, from the foundation, and it starts here. So as a Latina woman that has multiracial kids, that has lived in Pacific Grove, that has worked for Pacific Grove, that has paid taxes in Pacific Grove, it is discerning to sit here and months after months not get accurate information or even transparent information on what is going on with a particular cop that is supposed to serve and protect us and does not fully the community. So I ask you now to really look into your morals and how you want to represent yourself moving forward, because it's a new day and age, and you need to be progressive and you need to move forward. And if we don't start now, then you are going to be on the wrong side of history when history becomes very public, and then you are going to have to explain that to the generations to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jeff, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Hi, council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi. Hi, all. My name is Jeff Gobin. I'm living in the peninsula. My parents and siblings have worked in Pacific Grove for a long time. I've spent a lot of time interacting with the police. I wanted to talk about an article in Monterey County Weekly. It's titled "Violent Extremism Is Blossoming Online, But MIS Researchers Are Working To Counter The Threat." It reads, "The Center on Terrorism, Extremism, and Counterterrorism at MIS has been working with students and has spent much of the last two years investigating the far-right and harmful speech online. That center has typed in topics like the far-right's embrace of crowdfunding, cryptocurrency, examined fringe groups like Proud Boys, Oath Keepers, QAnon, and the three percenters. Most recently, the focus has also been at the intersection of online extremism and COVID-19 conspiracies." Quote from Director McGuffey, quote, "We want to contribute to the public understandings of these things, but we are not just a research institution. We are also looking to counter violent extremism. The best academic and research institutes on the peninsula are being contracted to support the fight against violent extremism across the country, but our own city councils cannot even control that extremism in our community." I want to read a statement that the police chief sent out. She said, quote, "I urge you not to let the actions of one affect the relationships that the city has built between the department, the community, the rest of the women and men of the Pacific Grove Police Department who are tirelessly to keep the community safe." That's the end of the quote. Chief, this is just a restatement of the one bad apple idiom. It's just one bad apple. Don't let it affect the relationships that the city has built between the department and the community. But the thing about the one bad apple idiom is that one bad apple spoils the bunch. Right now, the city council is allowing that public trust to be eroded every day this cop is not fired from the force. I want to read one more quote from the Monterey County Weekly. Quote, "I reached out," this is from an opinion article, "I reached out to a few police managers across the county to ask their opinions about the three-percenter cop in Pacific Grove. One said, 'If they had to send the guy out on a call for service from a black citizen, it would be always at the back of their mind how the officer would respond.'" I want the council to think about that quote, that police managers in our county themselves are saying, quote, "It would always be in the back of their mind how a three-percenter officer like this would respond." I want you to remember that there are plenty of people on this call that were alive in Pacific Grove, had restricted covenants barring black people from living here. I want you to remember the Department of Homeland Security views alt-right, anti-government extremism as the, quote, "number-one threat to domestic national security." And I want you to think about this opportunity to move beyond making statements about Black Lives Matter, about starting committee, and to actually stand with your community, who is clearly calling out for bold action. Let's not let this bad apple spoil the bunch. Thank you, city council.
Thank you.
Tommy Piper, you have the floor.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, to write this stuff down, because I'm so very angry and disappointed and sad. This is, of course, from the city council's statement on Black Lives Matter. It says, "We are committed to continuing and expanding policies and practices that promote racial equality and nondiscrimination. We will act to foster a culture of equal respect and understanding that affords equal treatment to everyone," end quote. And so how is the city fostering a culture of respect by sitting idly as this issue drags on for months? Chief Madalone and the department have proven themselves incapable of treating this issue as anything other than a public relations problem. That's a charitable reading of the situation. But as more time passes, and while we're in the midst of this second investigation into the same officer, a more accurate take may be that during the initial investigation, Chief Madalone chose to protect a hateful and racist member of her department. Why wouldn't he not only continue but double down on his hateful and racist rhetoric? He had the backing and protection of his chief and department. The growing pressure from our community for this officer to be fired, Chief Madalone to be removed from her position, and for outside oversight over the police department needs to be reflected by our council members. Whatever cynical political calculations the mayor and council members are making by keeping their hands off the wheel regarding this issue need to be put aside. Chief Madalone and the department have proven themselves completely inept at cleaning house. The city needs to step in and do something. Otherwise, they are complicit and their inaction renders whatever statements of intention they make around equality and respect completely hollow. And that's all I've got. Or one more thing I would like to call that for elf officer buddy to be removed from the force as well. He's a make pretend elf and I'm sick of seeing just this. Oh, I'm so frustrated. I'm sorry. I promised myself I wouldn't mention the make pretend elf. But that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Harvey.
I just would like to remind the council that we don't condone personal attacks during public comment. We'd like to keep the comments in compliance with the city council policy where we make them about a process or a policy or a program, but we don't take them to a personal level. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the reminder. Appreciate it.
Ezra, you have the floor.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, my name is Ezra Lambert. I'm a born and raised local CSU MB student. And up until the pandemic, I worked in Pacific Grove. I'll keep this short because I know other people want to speak. But I'd like to echo what a lot of speakers have said tonight and say that I'd like to see the council take a definitive stance on what is happening at Pacific Grove's police department. And because quill of comment does not seem to have a tangible effect on the investigation of the alt-right militia cop, I'd like to call upon the council to do what our current divisive president was not able to do and denounce white supremacy. This was mentioned at last, the last city PG City Council meeting, and the council has failed to respond. A lack of response to this will speak volumes because a lack of response is a response in itself. Your constituents are paying attention and the way the sitting council is handling this situation will be remembered in elections to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Randy Fairgarden, you have the floor.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening. At the city council meeting two weeks ago, we heard from the residents of Pacific Grove an unrelenting and ambiguous demand for accountability and transparency into the investigation of the alleged conduct by a suspended police officer in Pacific Grove. At the same meeting, Chief Madalone promised to be as transparent as possible at the investigation. Despite these demands from citizens and assurances from the chief, no information about the progress of the investigation or even what entity is conducting the investigation has been released to the city or police department. This has been, there has been no communication with the public about the scope of the investigation or whether it's even begun. The last time this officer was suspended with pay, it took three months and $23,000 to incorrectly determine that there was no problem with officer's behavior. How much time and taxpayer money will the current investigation consume? Any of either is too much as the officer unquestionably committed these acts. Even his supporters, together, unmasked and unticketed at the police station this Sunday, admit the officer's guilty of holding racist views. All the Chief Madalone needs to do is determine whether his behavior violated Pacific Grove Police Department policy, which clearly it did. Not only did this investigation lack transparency or accountability to the public, it is also unnecessary and wasteful of precious city resources. The city council must demand that Chief Madalone make a determination as to whether this individual should remain an officer in our town. It is clear this officer holds hateful views. He has shown that publicly through his actions. It is the duty of Chief Madalone to dismiss this officer for cause to demonstrate this type of bigoted and reprehensible behavior will not be tolerated in her department. Supporters of the officer will claim he has First Amendment rights to hold these views and display them proudly and publicly. They're correct. He has every right to say whatever he wishes, but there may be consequences for that speech. First Amendment prohibits Congress from passing laws to inhibit speech. It doesn't guarantee a racist police officer gets to keep his job regardless of his behavior. It is past time for the city and police department to do the right thing by rid of themselves and this corrupt and dangerous officer. Thank you for your time.
For your comments.
Beth Walker, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. As I was driving home from the store the other several weeks ago, I detoured by the bay to watch the waves. And I noticed a lack of mask wearing as people walked along the sidewalk, shopping downtown and hanging out at Lover's Point. I hear many people complain about the inability of opening our part of the county because the majority of the cases are not here. But every time a visitor comes from somewhere else, it endangers all of us on the peninsula. This has been going on since the beginning of the pandemic and was even worse when warm weather made us a destination for people fleeing the Central Valley. And although we have signs posted at every entrance to Pacific Grove, there is no enforcement. It would seem to me that having a community service officer posted along Lover's Point by the American tin canary and walking a beat downtown writing tickets for offenders would be a good use of time, not only creating awareness, but generating much needed revenue. All of us want to make it through this pandemic with our health intact and our community and our loved ones well. Right now, CHOMP has one ICU bed left and are now planning on how to expand the ICU to other floors to increase capacity to care for more COVID patients. It doesn't have to be this way. I believe that PG needs to encourage tourists and we need the much needed revenue, but not at the cost of our safety. We spend a lot of time at the beach or downtown. We just don't do it anymore because we don't feel safe. Sunday, as I was traveling to the store, I observed seven people at a protest and at least five of them did not have masks on outside of the Pacific Grove Police Department and in front of a sign that said that there's a hundred dollar fine for not wearing a mask. If we can't enforce the mask mandate in front of the police department, then what does protect and serve really mean? Our police department makes up $7 million of our budget. Given the low crime rate, surely we have enough officers available to enforce a mask mandate that science has proven to slow the spread of this deadly disease. I know that a vaccine's on its way, but it's not going to be for months and a lot of the folks in our community still have to maintain and be safe until we get to the point where everyone can be vaccinated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Nathaniel Sawyer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, honorable city council members, mayor, staff, and people on the call. I didn't write anything down. I've been doing this for a while now. So I just wanted to echo what everyone else has been saying. I want to thank you. First, I want to thank you for listening to the people on the call and those who have spoken to you privately. Democracy at work is what you're hearing right now. And I am so proud of the Pacific Grove residents and those outside of Pacific Grove because this peninsula is so small yet powerful. And we are an example to other cities and counties nearby. My question is, would you let a doctor work on you who has the beliefs that this officer has? What if someone walked into a doctor's office with a Black Lives Matter shirt, dark skin, and this person has these ideologies? I'm not going to attack his character. I'm just mentioning this because a law enforcement officer is supposed to serve and protect he or she or they or someone who is the heart of the community. You want people who genuinely love their community and want the best. They should be the ones who make sure they protect what they say on social media because it can have repercussions. What does your police department look like? Does it look like the community? Yes, Pacific Grove is majority white, but there are African-American and Latinx people in Pacific Grove. Get to know them. I'm African-American. I would love to get to know every single one of you. All you have to do is find me on Facebook. We can have a Zoom call. How diverse is your police department? Again, start a explore program where you have children learn about the department. Stop hiring outside of your region. There are a lot of young black and brown kids that would love to learn about law enforcement and learn to not be scared of law enforcement officers because we are taught to fear them based off of everything that's happened historically. Finally, how educated are your law enforcement officers? Isn't it time that we stop hiring officers with GEDs and high school diplomas and hire officers that have education? How come a lawyer has to have a four-year degree, but a law enforcement officer only has to have six months of training and they carry a weapon that could potentially harm someone on a bad stop? I want to thank and I want to commend city council member McAdams because she is going to be creating something very powerful soon with the help of the rest of the city council in Pacific Grove. I wish you a good night and happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you.
Liz Schreier, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. My name is Liz Schreier. I'm currently a medical student up at UCSX, born and raised on the peninsula. Have spent many years in Pacific Grove and still vote in Monterey. And I just wanted to add my voice to the ring and encourage the council to consider holding this officer accountable and holding the police department more broadly accountable. What we say when we are off the job in my future profession as a physician can have repercussions on, you know, our ability to do our job well and can jeopardize our position. And I think that I would hope that the council would agree that hate speech is not something that is going to keep our community safe. I just, I don't have anything else really prepared, but I just wanted to add my voice to the ranks and let you know that, you know, as a community, we're watching and we are here to hold you accountable. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Najamark, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you for those welcomes, Mayor Peak. They really help calm the jittery nerves. So I spoke to you all last meeting and again, I'm a woman of mixed race. My heritage is black and Russian. And as a minority here, again, I express my concern and I've made a lot of new friends and old friends who have echoed the same, the same concern. But I just wanted to again throw out there that this officer's efficacy and ability to enforce the law without prejudice has come into question. And not only that, but concern. When you consider his future and management of this controversy, I want to challenge you as you make your fair and balanced decisions and counsel your colleagues, I want you to ask what if? What if a member of your police force had no compunction about posting fuck black lives? What if he knowingly posted names of PG residents that were critical of him on his parlor account where he communicated with anti-government pro-militia users? What if the slogan that was put on his truck that read "Come and Get Them" was an actual challenge from an anti-government pro-gun alt-right group? In my mind, zero tolerance means zero tolerance for even the possibility that a Leo has been compromised. He was told how the community felt when, when we expressed our concerns and outrage regarding the decals on his truck. And he flagrantly squandered his second chance and the faith that we put in him, not once but twice. I'm sorry, I'm losing my composure, but this, this is just, I'm tired of this. I'm appalled. We don't have a time machine. We can't change the fact that some of us minorities are a little bit traumatized and terrified by this. But I want you to know that I trust and believe in process and procedure and law and order, even though my background suggests that I shouldn't considering recent trends within our nation. But I thank you for hearing our concerns and I trust that you guys will do the right thing and see this as a precedence, that you have the ability to change history, if not with a time machine. I don't think that's in the budget line, right? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Now, please, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Yes. Hi. First off, my congratulations to Mr. Pedori and Mr. Coletti, who are serving up there. My hat's off to you. And I'm still in it to win it, so on multiple levels. But I wanted to address tonight the cannabis referendum. And I wanted to offer my congratulations to everyone who worked so hard to get out there in these COVID times. And we all know what we're facing and how hard it is. But during these COVID times, there were 1,066 valid signatures that were collected on this referendum. There were 28 signatures that were not counted. And I want you all, all of you who may have voted another way on another time, to really listen to the voters, to put this on the agenda or on our election ballot so that we can review it and let the people decide. Because of the 28 people who were disqualified, one of them in reading over the lawyer's letter, she was holding her baby, holding her infant. And when she's holding her infant, her signature was different. I don't know. I've been studying handwriting for quite a while now as a hobby. And I don't know who spent the time, but somebody must have more time than me to analyze signatures to find out if somebody's signature varies when they're holding a baby versus when they're actually signing on the voter's registration. Four other people, their spouse, put the name, put the address, and the person signed. Again, how did somebody have so much time to do that? And those were 28 signatures, so it would have been valid. It would have counted. And I just want to really express to you that I am really congratulating the 1,066 registered voters who counted, the 28 others who tried to count, to really tonight and make them count, to pass 11C, to let the voters decide. And not to have the other subsequent agenda item already putting through the cannabis meeting of selection committee, not to have that happen, but to let us go slowly, let the voters decide. And just ending on a good note, if you all want to read one of my cancer stories, I'm hoping, fingers crossed, it will be in this Christmas issue, the print issue of the Cedar Street Times, called The Gift of Cancer. So thank you all very much. Thank you for all you do. I too love Santa. I was woohooing on my front porch. I was the only one, but I had a ball. And thank you for all you do all year long. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Norma, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Do you need to unmute yourself?
Hi, good evening. I spoke two weeks ago at the city council meeting and quoted sections from the police department's policy manual about misconduct, oath of office, the right to investigate personal social media accounts pertaining to misconduct, and about the officer lying during his first investigation. I want to pick up where I left off and talk about policies and why they are so important. Policies make sure that police officers are in compliance with the laws and follow the standards of law enforcement. Policies promote police accountability, which helps build trust in the city they serve. It is up to our city officials to enforce these policies. Officials who do not enforce these policies are tearing down public trust just like this officer did by his actions and behavior. Chief Madalone evoked the Officer's Bill of Rights, which is meant to protect officers in the performance of their official duties. But he was not in the line of duty when he placed those decals on his truck or posted those egregious comments on his secret parlor account. But what about our, our rights? We have the right to not be policed by a racist police officer, to not feel threatened by a rally leader posting residents' names. When Chief Madelon was questioned in the press conference if she was concerned about the safety of those named, she quickly responded, no, not at all. This lack of concern and dismissive attitude is very telling. We have an institutional failure of zero transparency and accountability that is obstructing justice and equality in our community. Many city officials and officers may sympathize with this officer and his beliefs. For example, we know that none of his fellow officers reported the decals on his truck in the police parking lot. It took the courage of a downtown shop owner to report the offensive decals. Then, less than three months after being reinstated, his secret parlor account was discovered with deplorable racist comments. He is an armed public servant who is paid by our taxpayer dollars. Don't we have a say about who polices us? I say we do and we want a thorough investigation that looks deeply at racism, not only of this officer, but of the whole police department. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Chelsea Lee, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Hi, thanks. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Um, so yeah, my name's Chelsea Lee, born and raised in PG. Um, and I like so many of my neighbors who I am so grateful to have connected with um through an, one of the worst possible ways, which is needing to rally our community to come together and stand up um for some real basic decency and accountability that goes across any sort of partisan lines or party affiliation. Um, there's a crisis going on in this country um that we have been ignoring and looking the other way and giving the benefit of the doubt for, for generations. Um, and while I've heard the PG City Council and the chief of police say things like Black Lives Matter, um, or take the time when everybody else is, and it's quite popular after the murder of George Floyd, um, to use his name and to claim that you are going to be doing work that reflects Black Lives Mattering as much as white lives matter. But you know as well as I do that in this country, white lives always matter more. It's happened time and time again. And I saw it this weekend when we saw rallies across the country and groups like the Three Percenters and other illegal armed anti-government conspiracy theorists on the fringe um committed multiple acts of stabbings and shootings at rallies across the country. Um, and at the same time, here in Pacific Grove, in front of the Pacific Grove Police Department, um, there were folks um with similar messages of extremism, including, I believe, a flag for the Three Percenters, um, who are also just not even uh respecting the, the decency to wear masks and keep us safe. Um, I feel like I got a little distracted there, but I'm just, I'm just horrified at how it's so easy for these things to be said, but you aren't taking any action and you can't say that you care and then ignore every opportunity as a leader with your position of power and privilege to actually change the course of these events. Um, you can take actions, they're not going to make everybody happy, but I hope that you can see that after six, seven months of this, um, there's a clear interested community here that is terrified that our police department doesn't know the difference between, between free speech and fuck Black Lives Matter and free Kyle Rittenhouse, a domestic terrorist who crossed state lines to murder peaceful protesters? And that we normalize this and we act as if this is just two equal sides that are just both too nutty to get along is egregious. Um, and I really think that it's time to disavow white supremacy as an organization.
Thank you, thank you very much for your comments. We need to move on.
Zoe Schotz, you have the floor.
Welcome. Oh, before Zoe starts, how many more uh speakers do we have?
Uh, we have seven hands raised after Ms. Schotz.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome.
Thanks, can you hear me?
Yes.
So, some, uh, some months ago, the city awarded a contract to Cole Pro Media in the amount of roughly $35,000 um as a result of this officer being investigated. Um, it was done so because transparency was needed and all, all of the city council members voted for transparency. The investigation that's being conducted now so far has not been transparent. The public has heard not a peep since the, um, since the chief spoke about the um officer being put on leave, not a peep about how this investigation is going to be conducted, who is going to be conducting it, who is hiring the firm that will be investigating, who is checking to make sure that they are reputable? Not a peep. And we've been through this before. There was a faulty investigation by a third party, I'll say in quotes, that was hired by the police department. How are we to trust that this next investigation is going to be conducted properly? We've heard nothing about it. I'm not going to be surprised when I hear the results of this. And we're going to get the same results that we heard last time. The public will, will scream if we hear the same results over again. We can't trust this if we aren't brought along with the process. I'd like to say that um the Equity Initiative that was approved um has little teeth without a task force. Um, the task force should have been approved, should have been approved uh for two council members to sit on to ensure that there is um equity amongst the decision-making instead of one person in the council making that decision. And um, and there needs to be a process to vet the individual and make sure that there's diversity on that task force. And it needs to be comprised of residents of the city of Pacific Grove. I also want to say that the amount of money that's being spent on the police department, um, all the different positions, I, I can't even tell you all the things that, that the police department does, but I do know that, that the social media, including Officer Buddy, is just, it's laughable. It's laughable that this is what our taxpayer dollars are going towards. I understand that you want a community policing, but we, we, because we have an elf as a police officer and it's a program, not a person, so this is not an insult to the program. It's just ridiculous. We should be spending our money differently. We should be spending our money on recreation programs. We should be spending our money on the library. We should be spending our money on resources that are going to give back to the community, not on these fake social media PR stunts. And get rid of this officer once and for all, please. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Kate Spencer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for the chance to talk. I would like to echo everything everybody has said so far uh about our concerns about this uh militia member cop. And I'm actually relieved that Ms. Schotz has clarified that there's been zero information out there because I thought it was just me not spending enough time online researching, but no, there is really actually no information out there that anybody else has been able to hear either. I'm really concerned, not just for all the reasons that everybody has outlined about why it's not a good thing to have a police officer who holds such affiliations with racist and anti-government um groups. It's extremely concerning that we haven't heard anything from you all. And I appreciate the gentleman earlier who said that he would like the city council to make a statement. And I agree with that. If you are, you said that it's a personnel matter, that there's a lot of things that you can't say because of laws. And I, I'm glad that there are laws that protect people's privacy, but that doesn't stop you from, you, the council, from making a statement to the public about what you would do if you didn't have to be following procedures. And then you could also tell us about the procedures that you are having to follow. So, I, I don't know where to look to find the rules and regulations or the ordinances or whatever it is that um, that you all are having to follow and that the, the chief is having to follow. But if you could make a big public statement with that and have a question and answer session where instead of us just telling you what our concerns are and then you moving on to the next agenda item without answering them, if we could actually have a back and forth conversation in public about this, it would really help us to feel um that there is movement and that there's some transparency going on. And I would really like a lot more transparency about the investigation. I have to say that hearing that the results of the first investigation was honestly fairly insulting. To have us try to believe that he didn't know what the decals meant is ridiculous. When he went out and chose them and put them on there and some of the um, uh, some of the aspects of them weren't, weren't even discussed in what was made public about uh what was found in the investigation, like the, the Mulan Labor, however you pronounce it, wasn't even mentioned. It was like, oh, it's just a comic character. Well, there's a lot more to that. Um, I, I just, I just was flabbergasted when I heard that we're supposed to believe that he didn't really know what they meant. And I also know that that means that the other police officers know what they meant because if you want us to believe that, that this was all a mistake, um, it's, that's just, it just beggars my imagination. So, um, it's, it's clear where he stands, it's clear what he believes, please make it clear what you believe.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Looks like we're having some technical difficulties with our timer.
Ms. Rodriguez, you have the floor.
Okay. Welcome.
Ms. Rodriguez, you have the floor. You have to unmute yourself.
Sorry, I've, can you hear me now?
Yes.
This is uh for the upcoming agenda on the salary adjustment. Uh, Ms. Rodriguez, I'm currently.
Mr. Rodriguez?
So.
Yes, so, um, would you mind waiting until we get to that agenda item? This, this public comment period is just for general city uh affairs comments? And we're going to have public comment for each, each agenda item.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Nico Inea, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Hello?
Hi.
Welcome.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Excellent, thank you. Hello, my name is Nico Inea. Thank you, mayor, city council, city staff for hosting this meeting. I'm one of the applicants in the current RFP process to win a dispensary permit in the great city of Pacific Grove.
Mr. Mr. Inea, I, I'm sorry to interrupt. We, that is on our agenda and we will have, did you just hold off on your comments? We will have a public comment period before that agenda item.
I apologize. Uh, speaker before me, Jill, did speak on this topic and you let her.
I, that shouldn't have happened, but it did. Um, but let's, let's not continue down, down that vein, please.
Yes, sir.
You'll, you'll get the chance to speak, I trust.
Absolutely.
Uh, Karice Kales, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Sharice Kales. I'm a Philippine ex-American woman and I am from one of the neighboring towns of Pacific Grove. I'm from Salinas. The honor lancing protection you have for your anti-government militia affiliated cop is not just a concern for the people that live in Pacific Grove alone. There's anything this nation has learned in the wake of George Floyd's death is this. Black Lives Matter is not just something to be said. The idea encompasses the urge for people to take action, legislative improvements. Various mayors nationally have assembled a police reform and racial justice working group. If your peers can do this, then surely it's not much to ask for the deter, for the termination of a crooked police officer. It's time you folks took responsibility for this. How is spending approximately $50,000 on a corrupt officer done for the safety of your people? Truthfully, it's a betrayal of integrity to the, to the citizens. It's also an egregiously poor example of accountability. To echo what Caleb said earlier, it shows whose side you really are in this movement and the struggle for peace among the people. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for your comments.
Al Schotz, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Mayor Peak and the city council. Um, I'd like to echo some of the concerns um spoken by others. Um, I'm, I'm also concerned about these internal investigations. Um, I call them internal investigations because uh the investigators are chosen and hired by the chief who supports the officer. So, I don't see how that can be, it's third party only in name. If you're shopping around for the investigators yourself, um, you're shopping for results along with those. Um, I'm also concerned to see the celebration of flags and symbols that have been co-opted by militia movements um out, out in front of the police department on, on Sunday. Um, uh, along with a protest there, uh, unmasked um out of town people waving militia flags in, in front of our police department while the officers stand idly by inside and don't write tickets uh while the people stand out in front of signs claiming hundred-dollar fines. I know for a fact that many people called into the police department. I myself called and uh was, was met with complete dismissiveness uh when, when I, when I expressed my concern about the unmasked gathering in front of the police department. Um, uh, you know, this uh, the, the, the flags and the stickers and all this stuff, I mean, people are kind of claiming ignorance or whatever, but I, I mean, this, these aren't coincidences that, that the chief suggests and suggested in her statement that they were coincidences by an unaware officer when all this stuff is carefully engineered, intentional actions that are meant to insult, injure and incite. Um, uh, this officer continually espouses his affection for armed violence with the, you know, assault rifle decals, mulan lob, come and take them, Punisher, homicidal vigilante, uh, three percenters. I mean, it's, it's nonstop, nonstop, every reference is armed violence. And I don't see how you guys can keep ignoring this. Uh, you're, you're going to be held extremely liable if something happens. That's going to cost our city even more money. Uh, that the chief acknowledges this bad apple in, in her press conference and doesn't want association with him? How does that work? Don't let the actions of one uh reflect on us, but that's your guy that you're protecting. How does that not reflect on you? I don't understand the, the logic or the reasoning there. I mean, and, and she even goes as far as to, you know, push these conspiracy narratives like he could have been impersonated or something like that when we know that's not true. It's impossible, it's been proven impossible. The verification process um renders that impossible. Um, I, I don't understand uh, uh, city manager Harvey's objection to derogatory comments about Officer Buddy. It's not a, a real person. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Audra Walton, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much and good evening, um, mayor and members of the council. Thank you for listening to our concerns. Um, my name is Audra Walton. I am a, um, I live in Marina. I have lived on the peninsula for all of my life, born and raised. And I just want to echo um my neighbors ahead of me. The region is, is definitely concerned. I'm actively engaged and, and absolutely watching you this evening and I am imploring you to listen to your constituents and the people that have called in to voice their concerns from across the region and the peninsula. Um, I, myself as a, I'm black. Um, and I, I certainly won't feel safe in your community as long as there is a police officer that says F my black life. Um, and, and inside of a city system that supports them, I have even less. Um, um, I heard an echo, I'm sorry. I, I have less confidence in my ability to um come to your city and enjoy everything that it has to offer um in ways that I have um for a lot of my life. So, um, and, and I did want to just give a lot of this bumps to my neighbors for. and and I did want to just give a lot of this bumps to my neighbors for I'm standing up and voicing and this is hard work and nerve wracking and kind of scary to speak truth to power, but I know for myself, if I showed up in your city without a mask and a bunch of people, I would be arrested. And probably several other things that I don't even want um to consider, but I know that 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 if this officer is actively saying F my black life, I know that I would be treated differently if I showed up in your city and he happened to pull me over or I was out without a mask or any of those other things without a doubt. And therefore I will be staying out of your city until something um I feel safe again. Thank you. Thank you again for listening to us. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Cindy Lee, you have the floor.
Welcome. Um my name is Cindy Lee. Thank you for um taking our uh concerns tonight. I too am addressing the uh concern with the police uh department and its um conduct and and um its member. Um I'm a family physician. I live in the house I was born in in Pacific Grove, so this is definitely hometown for me. As a family physician, I am held to a certain amount of professionalism and transparency in what I do. And when um we I kind of take it back to equating it to a medical issue that we might deal with. When we find an abnormality in our medical exam and we find a growth or a um something that needs to be identified and we identify it as a cancer, there's a workup that needs to be done. And the workup certainly has not been clear that has been done in this situation when they identify an abnormality or something that is an outlier from the normal um professionalism. I feel like this is having identified a problem um and letting it be completely untreated, just like if I was held to identifying a cancer in a person and uh failing to act in an appropriate fashion. Uh malignant cells start to affect the wellness of the entire body, and that's exactly what we have going on here. This identification of a of an abnormality and an outlier and something that we really don't uh see as a a value in our community is actually extending and affecting the wellness of the entire whole system. And I I truly see it as um having an untreated malignancy, lack of professionalism in the department, and lack of transparency in getting this process through. This basically this malignant cancer is should not be allowed to metastasize and is currently being untreated. And I think as a community, we want to know what our elected officials and professional organisms or or organism or organizations are gonna do about it. Very concerning and um and as a professional person myself, I just don't understand how this can possibly have gotten to this level. And I hope that that the community has heard and that this this issue can be addressed appropriately. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Alma Renteria, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. Um I just want to say that, yes, I am a resident of the peninsula and I am also very concerned about everything that has been going on with the militia cop. I just want to make sure that our voices are being heard. I have black friends that have shared stories with me of feeling unsafe in Pacific Grove. And as a social worker in the peninsula, I want to amplify the voices of my friends and community members. We just want to know what's going on. We need transparency and I want to thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
And E Kate M, you have the floor.
Hi.
Welcome.
Good evening, Council. Um my name is Emily Moss. I am a third generation Pacific Grove resident. I'm speaking to you today to express my utter disappointment with the handling of this situation in regard to the three percenter officer in Pacific Grove Police Department. In speaking to you tonight, I feel the need to emphasize that when citizens are essentially forced to take research into their own hands due to not only fear for their safety and distrust in the handling of these issues, but also due to what is being widely recognized by residents as blatant negligence in this situation, there is a serious problem in the way in which things are being conducted. To spend so much on an investigation that turned out to be useless, wherein the claim was made that the officer merely did not know anything about what he was proudly displaying and has thereafter continued to display is simultaneously laughable and scary. This officer has also targeted specific individuals within the community online, encouraging others to share his extreme, who share his extremist views to do the same. To have spent this much money on keeping an officer who is unfit to serve and has proven such repeatedly is absurd and an overhaul huge mishandling of funding and even more so public trust. Please recognize the citizens are aware of the incompetent and seemingly corrupt handling of these issues. Please do better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Uh Mr. Mayor, I see no other hands raised.
All right, well, let's close public comment. Well, um thank you for everyone from the public for speaking today. The the topic of uh most of the speakers was obviously our uh police officer that is under investigation. And I want to acknowledge your emotions and and your beliefs first first off, and also the fact that we haven't provided any additional information uh for several weeks. There was uh our police chief Kathy Madalone made a statement. We haven't had a public statement after that. There is a second investigation that is ongoing. And when we're legally able to provide more information, we'll do that. I I for one, and I think most everybody would like to have this issue settled as as soon as possible. Not as an excuse, but to let you know that council again is not involved as this is a personnel issue. And so we don't have information on on this matter. Again, it's not an excuse. It's just stating stating a fact. And the officer um obviously has rights that are enshrined in in state law. I heard one speaker suggest that there could be some sort of public forum for what what is going on. Well, it's it's uh predicated on state law. And I think when you go over that from based on your comments today, you you will come away dissatisfied. That that's you're right and and very understandable. But I I trust you know that we would like this resolved as soon as possible and provide as much information as we are able to do in a in a legal fashion. So uh with that, I want to turn to our next agenda item, the consent agenda. And I want to pull item nine A, that's local emergency actions as usual to be heard immediately following the consent agenda. Do any council members wish to pull any other items from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Any member of the public wish to pull an item from the consent agenda?
I see no hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Well.
I'll make a motion to approve the.
Please, Councilmember Emilio.
I'll I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda uh other than the emergency action plan.
So, Member Smith. Councilmember McAdams, second. May we have a vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Bedory?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Thank you. And I'll briefly summarize what we've just done. We've uh approved the council minutes for our meetings on December second and December ninth. We've authorized the uh or adopted a resolution authorizing city manager to enter into uh preparatory agreement and administrative uh agreement with the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration for Measure L. We've approved a resolution authorizing examination of transactions, sales and use records, and authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the agreement with HDL which provides us with auditing services for for sales tax, including Measure L. We've held a second meeting and adopted an ordinance to chapter two point six oh regarding electronic and paperless filing. We've received a core revenue report for November from Mr. Norrie. A um Association of Monterey Bay Government Minutes from October from Councilmember McAdams. Status of the cannabis uh referendum from Ms. Candell. Um a report from Mayor's Regional Meetings from myself. We've received an update on the status of special events scheduled for January and February from Mr. Sisik. And we've approved our revised council policy guidelines triple O nine and from myself, but with thanks to our city clerk, Ms. Candell. And we've approved to send a letter to Governor Newsom uh regarding vaccinations for farm workers as essential workers from Councilmember Smith. And that concludes our consent agenda. And so we're now on to item nine A, local emergency actions. Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh as council well knows, this is the time during our meeting when we discuss actions taken that require the city councils uh being informed or ratification uh related to the global pandemic and or um the shelter in place order and our local state of emergency. For this particular meeting, we have three items under the ratification section, uh none under the information section, and of course, the council always has the opportunity to discuss enforcement actions in general as part of this item. Um so I would like to first um cover mostly a somewhat ministerial item. Uh we we are bringing forward for your ratification, the movement uh of the Planning Commission meeting beginning in uh January, and I and I see that there's a typo in the agenda report. It should be January twenty twenty one. Uh of the Planning Commission meeting time to start at six P M. This is consistent with council direction, but we would ask for your ratification of that. Secondly, I'm going to enlist the support of our Human Resources Director to discuss the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. So if I could defer to Ms. Libian for a moment and then I'll finish up this section. Ms. Libian.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and members of the community. The Families First Coronavirus Response Act requires employers to provide their employees with paid sick leave or expanded family and medical leave for specific reasons related to COVID. And these provisions apply from May twenty twenty to December thirty first, twenty twenty. Currently, there isn't any information that the federal or state government will extend Family First Coronavirus Response Act. Therefore, the city is recommending extending the date for city staff until March thirty first due to the record breaking increases of COVID nineteen cases in our area. The Families First Coronavirus Response Act has been shown to reduce that the incidence of workplace transmission as well as helps with employee retention and undue hardships, particularly with childcare challenges during this time. If this provision is extended later or a similar one is passed, the federal or state provision will supersede the city's extension. Generally, the act provides that covered employers must provide for all employees up to eighty hours of paid sick leave, paid sick leave at the employee's regular rate of pay where the employee is unable to work because the employee is quarantined. It also provides for up to eighty hours of paid sick leave at two thirds the employee's regular rate of pay because the employee is unable to work because of a bona fide need to care for an individual subject to quarantine or care for a child whose school or child provider is closed or unavailable for reasons related to COVID nineteen. A covered employer must also provide to employees up to an additional ten weeks of paid expanded family and medical leave at two thirds the employee's regular rate of pay where an employee is unable to work due to a bona fide need or leave to care for a child whose school or childcare provider is closed or unavailable for reasons related to COVID. This leave can be taken intermittently. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Libian. Mayor, the last part of my presentation pertains to a proposal wherein I come back to the city council uh in January with a proposed draft uh city small business loan program. It has been my observation that many businesses in town might uh need a low or no interest loan to um offset COVID related expenses, not only restaurants, but also retail establishments and other businesses related to expenses incurred to complying with the shelter in place order and or global pandemic related uh expenses. And this these would be expenses above and beyond um what the city covers in its um CARES Act funding that was released previously. So I would be looking for council's direction to come back with a draft program for council's review and approval in January, just the ability to come back to present that. And with that, that concludes my report. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any uh public comment on this particular item?
I know, Mr. Mayor. I see no hands raised. I take that back. I do see one. Just a moment. Nadia Mark, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Okay, sorry, my dialogue box was a little slow. Um hi again. As a professional fundraiser um and community nonprofit grant writer, what I'm seeing in um all of our nonprofit communities and small business um is a need for grants and a need for no interest loans. So when you say that you're gonna make loans available to our small businesses, that is just kicking the can down the road. It does not help. I don't know what what the system or processes to shake some more funds from the CARES Act tree, but we need to give low interest or grants to our small businesses. It's a crying shame when I drive down Lighthouse and I see no activity in the storefront and the lights low and rather than immediately jump to, oh, well, they're probably working from home. I think, oh shit, is that another um small business that has gone out of business? If we have Lighthouse with empty storefronts for, I mean, the predominant um stretch there, you know, we're we're just shooting ourselves in the foot. So that is my two cents. Um and that's my also my professional um input. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right, council discussion on this particular item. All right, council discussion on this particular item? Councilmember Tomlinson?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the city manager for bringing these items forward. I think, you know, it was in our preference to move the planning commission to 6:00 PM, so that's an easy ratification in my mind. I think extending the Families First Coronavirus Act is essential for the, the people that work at our city. And then as far as the loan program, I would love to see the, you present that. And I, I do, you know, from what I understand, it would be a no-interest or low-interest type of loan program. As part of what the speaker just said, that's going to be the best benefit for our businesses. So I think that would be a great thing to bring forward and hear about in January.
Councilmember McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. City Manager, for these three items. I definitely support all three of them. Something to consider with regards to the small business loan program is to incorporate water entitlements. Maybe explore that a little bit. I know that to perhaps, you know, open a restaurant or tasting room, brew pub, et cetera, might be risky at this time, but just, you know, maybe another way to entice a new business to come to town or perhaps an existing business to, to expand. So I would appreciate your consideration on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Pedore?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the city manager for bringing these together. For the item number one, I, I, I was under the impression that there were other committee meetings that were also clashing or kind of like wanted to have a different time schedule. So we're just wondering what, what is, what is being handled? How are we handling those? For item number three, develop a small business loan program. Seems to be it's very specific, kind of like tied to a very specific event like COVID-19 or shelter in place only. I was wondering if it actually like make it more general purpose, like for any emergencies. Basically, the city can provide a loan program or a grant like somebody suggested. Kind of make it more generalized so that we don't have to come back to the drawing board to say if there's a new kind of emergency, then this council has to take action on it. Thank you.
Thank you. I am also in agreement to support all three. Thank you, Mr. Harvey, for bringing these forward. On the remark by, from the public, from Najia Mark on CARES Act funding, we have expended or about to expend all our CARES Act funding, isn't that right? I, I see our city manager nodding in agreement. As far as receiving more CARES Act funding, that's, that's up to Congress. And I check daily, and Senate Majority Leader Mitch McConnell seems to be adamantly opposed to more CARES Act funding for states and local governments. And so that's where that money would come from. If Congress changes their mind, we might see, see some funding. That would be nice. I had a question on the business loan program. Where, where would the funds come from? I, I assume the general fund, but is there another fund that we can borrow some money off for a little bit, understanding that it would be repaid?
Without sending our administrative service director into the emergency room, I, I don't want to talk about inter-fund transfers or loans, but, Mr. Mayor, I can tell you that I've met with the environment, excuse me, Economic Recovery Action Plan Subcommittee, which is comprised of councilmembers Tomlinson and Emilio, and they have some very creative ideas as to how we might backfill that loan program. And I will be working with the two of them to bring forward to you for your consideration of a program in January. So we, we, again, we're trying to be very creative and explore as many opportunities as we can so that we don't take from the city's bottom line if, if it's avoidable.
Excellent. Councilmember Emilio?
I'll, I'll make a comment after Councilman Coletti goes, then I'll go next. That's okay, Mayor?
Absolutely. Councilmember Coletti?
Thank you, Mayor. Is there budgeted funds currently for this proposed loan program?
No, there are not, councilmember.
How much are you anticipating budgeting for this loan program?
This will come back for a council to discuss in January. This is just the concept. And so I'd be working with councilmembers Tomlinson and Emilio, members of the subcommittee, on that topic.
So you don't have an estimate?
I could tell you, you know, we've thrown around a few different pots of money, numbers, $50,000 maybe. It might be less, but I don't want you to have a number in mind until we bring this back for your consideration in January.
No, but I'm, I'm sure there was some kind of estimate that was thought would be appropriate and useful. So that, that helps me. Thank you. Well, I look forward to that. I guess that would be a budget amendment of some kind, since we haven't budgeted for it. And then I'm definitely in support of getting the planning commission back to their regular meetings, so thank you for that.
Councilmember Emilio?
Thank you, Mayor. The, just to make a quick comment, since I've been a member of the committee, it's to develop a lifeline to our business community right now. But I'd also like to make a motion.
Please.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to ratify the commission, planning commission meeting time, number one. Number two, extend the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. And three, develop the small business loan concept brought back, I believe, in January.
A second.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
Yes, sir. Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmember Pedore?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. We'll now move on to attend item 11A, ordinance to amend fiscal year 2021 operating capital improvement budget. Director Hannah, welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'm just having a little bit of technical difficulties. Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes.
The item that I have before you today is to consider an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2021 capital and operating budget. In March of 2020, Monterey County officials initiated a local shelter-in-place mandate with state and federal governments implementing similar restrictions. These mandates were anticipated to primarily reduce transient occupancy tax and sales tax receipts that would have been generated from out-of-town visitors with other, with other projected decreases in other revenues such as recreational programs, facility rentals, and other activities that could decline as a result of social distancing. Due to these factors and much uncertainty, the city adopted the fiscal year 2021 budget with a 10% furlough for city employees. The estimated annual savings from this was approximately $845,000 with a value of a 10% reduction for one quarter at approximately $211,000 and a value of a 5% reduction at approximately $106,000. Each quarter, city staff meets with different employee groups to review the city finances as part of the furlough agreement. All miscellaneous groups have agreed to up to a 20% furlough. Public safety employees have also agreed to a 0% to 10% furlough with a opener for a furlough of up to 20%. As we move through the first half of the fiscal year, the city finances are tracking relatively consistent with the budget. Details of the core revenue performance are included in the packet. And while this performance is trending with the budget and is encouraging, it is still $1.7 million less than revenue earned at the same time in the prior year. While there is still fiscal uncertainty related to the new staff, related to the new health mandates, staff is recommending reducing the furlough by 5% for one quarter. This would allow for an increase in service levels to the community, improve staff morale, and allow for activities to move forward. The estimated impact to the general fund is approximately $122,000. This includes the projected revenues from Measure L of $250,000 as well as an increase in expenses of $106,000 for a 5% furlough for the third quarter. In addition, this budget amendment also includes adjustments for the fire services contract. At the time the budget was adopted, the city was working with significant vendor contracts to achieve a 10% reduction in cost. The budget assumed these savings, however, the city was not able to reach an agreement. So how this translates to the original budget, when we originally adopted it, we were looking at a $7 million estimated ending fund balance for fiscal year 2021. When we finished adjusting the budget for some of the carryforwards, and we also had some CARES Act funding, and we, and we, and we received a better projection of estimated fund balance, we were looking at, at now having a $7.4 million fund balance at year end. With this adjustment, we come to a fund balance of $7.2 million, which is still originally better than how the budget was adopted at $7 million. How does this align with our reserve policy levels? When we additionally, initially adopted the budget, we were looking at a, at $746,000 below reserve policy levels. With this adjustment, it will now be $586,000 below the policy levels. This is largely due to some of the increases in, in revenues as well as, as the fund balance changed for ending fiscal year 1920. To share with you what this looks like from the target perspective is our estimated ending fund balance was planned to be $7.2 million. And it results in a minimum policy level limits of $7.8 million. That takes into consideration a percentage of operating expense and debt service. So while this creates an amount that's below policy levels of $586,000, we still are in the fiscal stability line of our reserve calculations. As you may recall from our policy, 2.2 of the 35% of the operating expenditures and debt service is set aside for situations like these where the city runs into unplanned financial emergencies. And with that, I would like to conclude my presentation, but however, the human resources director would also like to provide some additional information.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. I just wanted to provide council with some information I collected with some of our neighboring cities, seeing what they're doing in regard to furloughs and reductions with personnel. And so I'm just sharing that information, starting with the city of Carmel by the Sea. The city of Carmel by the Sea did not implement any furloughs, but they did lay off seven employees and they left 12 vacancies unfilled. They also reduced their capital improvement budget for fiscal year 2021 to zero. For the city of Monterey, they have nine employee groups. So for the majority of the groups, they pretty much did the same thing, but for fire and police, they're a little bit different. So I'm going to talk about the majority of the groups, so seven out of the nine groups. Seven out of the nine groups had pay reduced, ranging from a 4% reduction to a 9% reduction, except for the general employees. The general employees did not provide any concessions. A 2% COLA was deferred from July 2020 to January 2021. And Monterey laid off recreation, conference, library employees and part-time staff. And they provided severance pay to 68 of those laid-off employees. Staff salaries will be restored for all of these spokes starting January 1st of this coming year. So they'll be restored to 100%. And the deferred COLA, so the 2% that they were provided in July 2020 that were, that was deferred will also be implemented January 1st of 2021. And the city is dipping into their reserves to cover this cost. For the city of Seaside, what they did is they had a 10% overall budget cut for each of their different departments. So some departments or groups took it a little bit differently. So some had a pay reduction, others gave up other types of benefits that basically reduced their budget by 10%, such as like giving up a paid holiday or floating holiday, things like that. Their employees are also working a four-day work week, so they're actually closed every Friday to the public. And what I've been told by their human resources director is that staff will be recommending in January to reduce the 10% budget, budget reduction to like a seven and a half percent. And that concludes my information that I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Director Goh would like to speak. And?
I'm sorry, Mayor Peak, I would like to just speak during public comment time. Thank you.
Well, here you have, you don't have a timer.
Mr. Harvey, if your presentation from Director Hannah and HR Director Letitia Libian is completed, I can begin public comment if you would like.
No, no, we'll, we'll start public comment in a moment. Okay, I mean, this, that's not, you know, okay.
I apologize. It's tough for me, being a panelist and trying to also be a representative.
Mr. Harvey, can you help us out?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I believe Mr. Goh is wanting to speak during public comment because he is switching hats and wanting to speak as the representative of the department head employee group. And that's why he's wanting to do that at that time.
That is correct. My apologies.
All right, no, no, no need for any apologies. Thank you. All right, we'll now go out for public comment. And Mr. Goh, I think you're first in line.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Peak and members of the city council. And again, I am here tonight as the spokesman for the department head, an unrepresented group. And I'd like to take this time to thank you and the city council for providing our small group with this opportunity to take part in this discussion. As department heads, we are not only responsible for administering the workload through our departments, but also the well-being of our respective staff, who are all members of the GEA, MEA, and POA. Over the last few months, we've seen our employees bear the hardships of the furlough, not only with respect to their day-to-day work tasks, but also personally. Initially, staff agreed to a 20% furlough. And as department heads, we grew increasingly concerned that a 20% furlough would result in significant deferral of projects, programs, daily tasks, and this would re, would result in the decline of staff morale. We also knew our residents would continue to expect city staff to provide a level of service that they have come accustomed to, and we had concerns that we would not be able to meet those expectations. When we learned at the start of this fiscal year that furloughs would only be 10% instead of 20, we had some relief, as our main concern was how to provide services to our residents. We quickly stepped in and altered schedules, rearranged our daily tasks, and evaluated our workloads to accommodate a 10% reduction. and evaluated our workloads to accommodate a ten percent reduction. We learned quickly that a ten percent furlough presented numerous challenges, as the work requests, service calls, and expectations only grew during these challenging times. It has been difficult for us as department heads to meet all of those expectations. A reduction in the furlough will ultimately allow all employees and all employee groups to accomplish more. Personally, I have already seen an increase in staff morale when employee groups have been presented with a proposed reduction from ten to five percent. As the department heads, we'd like to thank council for your consideration tonight for a furlough reduction, and we are dedicated to providing the level of service you all and the residents of Pacific Grove have come accustomed to. Thank you very much for the time tonight and your consideration.
And thank you very much as well. Do we have, Ms. Kendall, do we have any other speakers for our staff labor groups?
Yes, sir. We have John Goss. John Goss, you have the floor.
Welcome, Mr. Goss.
There we go. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is John Goss, and I'm the president of the Civil Grove General Employees Association. I would like to start by thanking this and past councils for having the foresight to make sure that the city was in a financial position to weather this very challenging crisis. It is a credit to you that the city has not had to lay off any full-time positions, and that the citizens have had very minimal disruption to their municipal services. In fact, most planned projects have gone forward, and city departments have not faltered in their operations. I would also like to thank you for considering the item before you tonight. The general employees were the first employees unit to sign an agreement with the city to enter into the furlough, and in fact, voted unanimously to accept the terms. It isn't the first time that we as a unit have pitched in to help the city in times of financial turmoil. During my twenty-plus years, we have accepted furloughs and pay reductions four times. Tonight, I am here to ask that you consider reducing the current ten percent furlough to five percent. This time has been hard on many employees. I've reached out to the group and asked how they have been affected personally by the pandemic and the pay reduction, and I'll relate a few of the responses that I've received. One person related that she had lost a spouse, and now she was a sole provider in her home. She and her two children are now looking for a new home that, so that they can reduce the rent that they have to pay in order to keep the children in college. She said, and I quote, "I'm grateful to have a job to come to even with a ten percent pay cut, but knowing when this will improve will change so much in our home." These days, small financial adjustments make huge impacts in our world, and this reduction would be a New Year's blessing," end quote. Another person, who is a student, as well as being employed as a full-time, full-time, related that because the pay reduction, because of the pay reduction, that she had to find a less expensive apartment, and now she thinks that she may have to withdraw from her degree program because she can't pay for the tuition. One employee said that she has young, a young child, and because schools are closed, she had to rely on her parents to watch him. When they can, she must take time off under COVID pay, which is not full pay. This is causing her to lose more than the ten percent reduction. And yet another employee with a young daughter just starting college was trying to pay off some unexpected medical bills when the furlough started. Then his car broke down, and he has exhausted his savings. He has now fallen behind on his PG&E bill, and in his own words, he isn't sure how it's going to make it. Thankfully though, because of donations made by, to us by Councilmember Emilio, we've set up an emergency fund and plan to help him with a small donation. These are just a few of the stories that I've received. Unfortunately, even with good jobs, because of the high cost of living in this area, many employees in this unit live very close to the edge. Even a minor reduction in pay can have detrimental effects on such tight budgets. In closing, I want to make sure that you know that the association is aware that the financial situation could change for the city, and that we are always willing to work with the city to find solutions. Thank you very much for your consideration.
And thank you very much as well, and the entire GEA.
Mr. Mayor, Caleb Snyder's on the line. Caleb, you have the floor.
Welcome, Mr. Snyder.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity, Mayor Peak and City Council. I am here today to represent the Management Employees Association, which I'm the president of, which consists primarily of program managers and your management analysts. It has been difficult during these times for a lot of people. And specifically for our situation, the reduction in pay has led to hardships at home. We are very excited about the opportunity to be able to provide more for the city by reducing the furlough from ten to five percent. It would really impact our lives. I have to echo many of the same things that Mr. Goss and Mr. Goh stated regarding, you know, the hardships on the families. It's, it's really important that we are able to get back to a full-time job that we signed up for. That's, that's what we're looking to do. This is not just a job, but it's also a passion. We care about what we do every day, and we want to get back to doing it the best we can. And the best way to perceive it that we feel is to get back and to reduce the furlough as much as possible. So moving from the ten to five percent would have a significant impact, not only on us personally, but professionally, because it would allow us to get caught up on some of the things that we've been putting aside in order to prioritize the public benefit and the public good. The employee, the Management Employees Association understands that when we negotiated this side agreement, that there would, could be some fluctuation. And the idea that we move from ten percent to five percent, and then possibly back if necessary, if there were some unforeseen circumstances in the future, is something we're willing to accept. But the economic reprieve that the next three months would provide would be substantial. We know we're not out of the woods yet, and we're prepared to work alongside with our counterparts and other organizations, the GEA and the Unrepresented, to do what is necessary to provide for the city, the citizens, and for one another. And the best way to provide that would be to getting us back to work more, and which would also help alleviate some of our hardships at home. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and to the entire MEA.
Sal Rodriguez, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So mine's pretty short and sweet. Sal Rodriguez, I'm currently the Pacific Grove Police Officers Association President. On behalf of all our members, I would like to ask for the city council's support in approving the furlough adjustment from the current ten percent to the proposed five percent. Six months ago, we were asked by the city to help ease the burden of the financial crisis the city would be experiencing during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. We were tasked with keeping all of our citizens safe with the less. Our membership stepped up to the challenge, even though the ten percent salary decrease would cause us to experience financial hardships. As you know, this year has been filled with hardships and difficult times. We look forward to a small glimpse of good news, and knowing that things are looking brighter in the near future. We look forward to the city leaders identifying a feasible and sustainable end to our entire furlough in the next few months. We are committed to doing our part to keep all of our citizen, visitors, and business owners safe in Pacific Grove. We will continue to offer the long-form service that is expected by y'all. Thank you, and Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to everybody.
Thank you very much, and to the entire POA.
Inga Lawrence and Deimer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff. Boy, what fascinating timing for the employees to bring this up. We just started a new lockdown. There's surges going on. The ICU beds are filling up. The vaccine is maybe being, gonna be slowly, slowly, slowly rolled out. Hotels and lodging are shut down again with only essential workers. I'm glad the city employees, well, they saved their jobs too by taking the ten percent for this period, but I don't see any improvement yet, and I figure either the city employees are all in with we, the public, as far as hardship goes, or they aren't. And this is hard times for everybody. I mean, the people you serve too, and boy, the morale of the public isn't so really great right now either, so I don't know. This is really not good timing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
We'll now go for council discussion on this agenda item. Anybody shy today? Councilmember Pedori.
Yeah, I was wondering if anybody else would raise their hand, but it's okay. The, thank you, Mayor. I had some kind of like questions around the mechanics of how, how it has been presented. So I have a few questions, and probably it may be best for me to just do a Q and A. So I'll just start with the first question. One is the, there was a mention in here that the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget was developed with the fact that the city was expected to basically have contracts reduced by ten percent. And out of those, the one with the fire department did not pan out. First of all, is that correct? Do I have that right?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Pedori, that is correct. We were anticipating being able to achieve a reduction from the city of Monterey. However, their negotiations with their employee associations did not allow for that type of reduction to client cities.
Okay, and as a follow-up to that, so does that imply that the other negotiations have panned out?
Yes, the majority of our major contracts with the city, the major contractors with the city, including Force, Foreleaf, our building services, the city attorney's office, other major contracts, all provided commensurate reductions.
Okay. The other, the, the next question I have is, just from how it is being proposed here, is the anticipation that we're going to adjust this budget on a quarterly basis? So that means if this were to go through, then only the three Q numbers are going to be adjusted. Is that correct?
That, that is correct, as the amendment calls for only three quarters of the amount. If it were to be adjusted again, we would go back and make that adjustment at, at either mid-year or right before the beginning of the next quarter.
Got it. And as a follow-up to that question, there is a citing in here that we are projecting the Measure L revenues to be at two hundred and fifty thousand, and that is being considered to be a Q three adjustment. From my understanding, Measure L will not take place until actually April first. So is that a true statement, that we can still make the adjustment for Q three, even though the Measure L revenues will not start until Q four?
That, that is correct. When we have a, a revenue that it's gone through the voter process, then it's pretty much, it's going to be there. We, again, due to COVID, we aren't certain if it is going to be the two hundred and fifty, it could be less, but that's going to be revenues that are earned through April through June. So when we prepare the budget, we prepare it for the full year, estimating that this is kind of a material item that we thought we would go ahead and include in this budget amendment, as well as the fire contract.
Okay. And last question, I understand there is going to be a CAFR published, like a comprehensive annual financial report. Does that have any bearing on, on what you're adjusting here?
No, the, the comprehensive annual financial report will be for fiscal year nineteen twenty, and we should, we're hoping to have that by the end of the fiscal year. Our auditor, I mean, I'm sorry, by the end of the calendar year. Our auditors are running a little bit behind due to being, having to do remote audits. So we're anticipating it either be done, to be done at the end of December or the first part of January, but that will be for the prior year. Any budget amendments that we make in this year will be reflected in next year's financial statements. So we will be able to show how the budget was adopted, how it was finally amended, and then compare the actual results to that.
Okay. All right, got it. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to thank our employees, the associations, and the contractors, who have willingly, you know, taken a reduction in their income to assist the city, you know, while we try to maneuver and get through the pandemic. You know, I know for me, there's no way in a million years that I think the pandemic would be as long as it has been. I was thinking two months, three months, and, you know, ten months later, I know that nobody could have foreseen that. So, you know, we all are impacted. Everyone, everyone in, in, in our whole city has been impacted in some way. You know, and especially our, you know, hearing our employees' hardships, those really weigh on me. So, you know, I, I do have some questions though, and I think that first I'll start with Ms. Hannah, if that's okay. So I'm just wondering, when you talk about the two hundred and fifty thousand in new revenues from Measure L, was that project, projection made before this updated stay-at-home order? Because obviously now until January eleventh, at least, with the potential of extension, we are not going to be having the revenues, the sales tax revenues from outdoor dining. Retail is limited to twenty percent occupancy. Our hotels are supposed to be for essential travel only. So I'm just wondering, how did you get that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar number?
That is similar to, to, to what we had seen in the prior year. The prior year had performed better. We did take into consideration some of the downturn, but we don't know yet if by April through June, what performance will be like. We may get a better, better feel after we move through this, this newest lockdown. What kind of impact? We have seen sales tax revenue rise, rise in some areas, not bringing us to the hundred percent mark of what we were. But we do have some increases in online sales, which are offsetting some of the off, from some of the other revenues. And in just meeting with our consultant, we're seeing while some sales tax related to restaurants is going down, there's more sales tax coming in from some purchases at restaurants and more like to-go type services.
Okay, so when you projected this two hundred and fifty thousand dollar number, did you did you and staff perhaps look at what the first very restrictive shelter in place? Did you look at what those numbers were like, March, April, May?
We looked more towards where we, where we landed in that particular quarter. Um, and, and kind of looked at those numbers. We didn't go down to that level completely because we are seeing now that we know a little bit more. Um, again, it could be somewhat less, uh, but it could be more as well. Um, we are seeing a rise in, in T O T previously. And this, when we look at current T O T from what was projected, we're a little bit above our projections. Um, but we know that that's going to decrease. Now, how that rebounds, again, after this, after these mandates, there is some uncertainty. The thing that we do know is that we are coming in better than anticipated. So if you were to look at those, uh, go back to those numbers that we looked at, we originally were adopting a budget with expecting to be seven million at year end. And, and now I think we're looking at, um, seven, close to seven point two. So in that, in that scheme, that what if it didn't happen? I know we're going to get, I would like to say, I know we're going to get some of it. We're still, would be close to what we initially started out with at the, at what, when we adopted the budget.
Thank you. Um, in the comparison to Carmel, it was stated that Carmel did not approve a capital improvement, uh, a C I P budget. Um, and, and the city of Pacific Grove, you know, unfortunately, we did a very robust one, which also included a five hundred thousand dollar share of cost um, to receive some Tamsi money. So I'm wondering, you know, for me, my preference is, is we find this money. Um, and we take it from somewhere and, and put it in this other pot. So can we reevaluate our capital improvement, uh, project budget and look at, you know, what we have available there and perhaps, you know, ship some money with, you know, half of the, half of the fiscal year left?
Uh, through, through the mirror, we'd have to, um, we'd have to look at the projects to see what projects have been started. Um, from looking at some of the list of projects that we have, um, the Point Pinos Trail Project, um, has not been started, but at the same time, um, we've set aside some funds. The general fund portion has been carried forward because it's part of a, a grant award agreement. Um, of the five hundred thousand dollars, uh, we have some other projects where engineering is underway. Now, whether or not those can be stopped, you know, we'd have to look at that. And then we'd have to also recognize that those projects that are funded through, uh, the state or measure X, they may need to also stop because money to fund those are contingent upon a spending that five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, and so to your knowledge, have any of the measure X funds as far as the grant or the matching? Those are still assured even with the, the current economy?
Right now, we have not, um, seen any, any note of that being reduced at this point.
Okay, and then just wondering, you know, are we, so is the city currently in a hiring freeze?
I would have to look to our human resources director or city manager for that question.
Uh, no, we are not in a hiring freeze. As an example, uh, Commander Lakin announced his retirement, as you are aware, and we are filling that position.
Okay, and have, has the city laid off any employees since, since middle of March?
We have. We have laid off, uh, non-essential, part-time employees.
Okay, but have we laid off any full-time, essential employees?
No, we have not. And that was part of the, uh, appeal to the employee associations in adopting a citywide ten percent furlough, was it allowed for, um, targeted layoffs through, uh, comprehensive sacrifice?
Right, okay. And then, Mr. City Manager, with regards to negotiating the fire service contract, I mean, is that that's just, that's a non-negotiable, that's, there's nothing we can do?
Well, one of, one of the trade-offs that you accept when you enter into a contract relationship is that, you know, you, you get the benefit of, 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 of not having to, um, uh, deal with, with the, the issues of the day-to-day with that, but you don't get the benefit of, of the management of, of the operation and any dividends, if you will. And, and Monterey Fire Department employees are City of Monterey employees. And, uh, they work for the City of Monterey, not the City of Pacific Grove. And the contract is built upon largely the expense of their salaries for the services.
Okay, thank you. So I think for me, you know, first, I really appreciate the, um, employees that, that acknowledged, you know, and accepted the fact that, that they knew going into the furlough that, that it would be, um, adjustable and that they're comfortable with that. You know, that really, uh, hel- helps me. As far as, you know, the decision tonight. Of course, I want to hear from, um, the rest of my colleagues. You know, but I am leaning on to just wait until March. I mean, we, we're in another very restrictive shelter in place order. And had that not happened, you know, I, I would not be so torn um, as I am right now. And, and so I think that, uh, you know, I, sorry, I, I would definitely like to hear from my colleagues, so, thank you.
Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, um, Mayor. It's great also to hear all employee groups and I also wanted to acknowledge right from the shoot here that I, um, I support this. And the colleagues, I mean, the employees have indicated that they're willing to work shoulder to shoulder with the, the city. And if things go south in March or whenever, uh, they're willing to work shoulder to shoulder. I also want to bring up that, um, you know, they're the backbone of our city, of the city of Pacific Grove. There are a hundred and twenty-seven active employees. And eighty full-time, which includes management, and forty-seven part-time employees, and all of them have taken a hit. So I truly believe that we need to, um, go with this, uh, draft ordinance, and that's my professional opinion.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, this is a really difficult question. And I understand the hardships that people are facing. Um, I, I've been through a government furlough before, when I used to work for the county of Santa Barbara, and it was long and difficult. But right now, COVID nineteen and the pandemic being what it is, and, uh, you know, all sectors have taken massive hits, uh, the private sector has taken massive hits in certain areas. Um, and I've seen that as well. And the uncertainty of the, uh, of the pandemic right now and the second lockdown, it just, the timing of this doesn't, to me, doesn't make sense. I would, I think it's good that we revisit it on a quarterly basis. I certainly wouldn't want to go backwards and prove something tonight that would reduce the furlough and then try to go back in three months and in, increase it again. I don't think that that's a good plan. So I'd like to see how we come out of the second lockdown and, uh, take our next opportunity in March, which is what we, we've all agreed to, to review it again. That, that would be where I would land on it. And I will just say, um, I, I do not want to imperil our capital improvements budget. Uh, that, I don't, I don't think that's a good, good idea either, because we're getting a lot of matching funds and things like that. And we've done a lot of great things for the city in that way, so that, that I don't want to do. But, um, I think looking at this, at the, at the next opportunity, we'll, we'll get a clearer picture of where things are at next year, early next year, after the lockdown ends. Um, and if our businesses are gonna recover, because right now, that, you know, that seven million dollars is really important because we have security. And I just would hate, I would hate to, uh, make a decision that results in potential, a potential loss of, of that security. And so for the, I think it's the best thing for the city of Pacific Grove that we, we hold on this and, and we delay. Thank you.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, I completely support this. I think we should go to five percent. I think we negotiated with the employees and they came to the city's, uh, request and they have been very much sho- shoulder to shoulder and in lockstep with trying to do everything they can to get us through this pandemic. Um, they, the employees all unanimously agreed to a twenty percent furlough. We, we sat around and decided that ten percent would be a good thing to start with, and that we would look at it on a quarterly basis. And that's what we've been doing. And now the time is before us to look at it again on a quarterly basis. And what I'm being told by Ms. Hannah is that we are, we approved a budget where we were willing to go below our reserves by seven hundred and forty-six thousand dollars down the glide slope. And we are now on a glide slope for four hundred and sixty thousand. So we're above it. So if you want to look for the money, we, that's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars right there. And so by approving this, we'll, we'll go down to five hundred and eighty-six thousand. So to me, finding the money has already been done by purely waiting and seeing, which was what our plan was all along, which was to wait that, as this unfolds. And we'll have to do it in January, February, March as well. But in the meantime, I would like to give the security to our employees while we can. They're asking for a hundred and six thousand dollars that helps them pay their bills and stay off, you know, from having to move. And it's real money that we will give them. If we wait and until March, they don't get that money. Um, however, if we do it now, we, we have the money, we can give it to them. And they also are in agreeance that in March, if we have to go back to ten percent or even up from that, we would be able to. We have that leverage, we agreed with them, and they've agreed. And they spoke tonight saying they would be understanding of such a move. So I feel like we have a lot of safety nets, um, and seven million dollars is a huge safety net to have. And I, um, we've, you know, we already agreed to go below our reserve. And I, um, I don't see why we wouldn't be able to do this for the next three months, looking at the numbers that Tori has calculated for us. Um, I, I would much rather give the security to our employees and make a difference in their lives for the three months than, than us sit on it for three months and wait and see, because we have moves to make in March if it's looking like we need to make those moves. So I support this passionately.
Councilmember Clitty.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, um, I'm not sure we have many safety nets, quite honestly. I, uh, hospitalization rates are going through the roof. We're in the midst, we're at the onset of a new lockdown order. Transient occupancy rate, our second highest revenue source in the city, has cratered. We don't, we don't have any safety nets. And I would say doing this salary raise at the onset of a new lockdown would be unwise. Uh, we should wait till March. The biggest thing, and Councilmember Smith mentioned this, is I don't want to be modulating this furlough rate. Five percent today, ten percent tomorrow. Oh, no, we totally underestimated. It's gotta be twenty percent. Ten percent has kept things at a fairly, or fairly steady and very predictable level, and I just don't want to modulate that. I don't think it would be prudent. And I don't think it's fair to the employees to say, we're gonna give you essentially uh, fifty percent of your salary back, only to say, no, we shouldn't have done that, and now we have to take it back. And I think anyone, I think they would recognize the fact that we are in the midst of a new lockdown order. And, you know, the proposed salary increase originally came forward before that lockdown order had been, uh, initiated. So things haven't gotten better. We, we don't have a safety net. Things have gotten worse. So we have, we just have to, you know, as leaders, and that's what we are, as leaders, we have to come to terms with things have gotten worse. It's unfortunate. I wish it weren't true. But they have, and we have to show the leadership, uh, of basically facing the facts as they were presented. You know, I, I've heard discussion about, we have ample reserves. Some of you maybe weren't here back in two thousand and nine, when the city only had a few hundred thousand dollars in reserves. It took over a decade to build those reserves back up to where we're at currently. I, and I remember two thousand and nine. I remember some of the bad decisions that came out of being in that predicament. Uh, so I'm very reticent to continue on a path where I can see, you know, the signals are pretty clear here. It's gonna get worse, and we have to prepare for that. And, well, again, the ten percent furlough rate that we've established has kept things at a fairly good, fairly steady, uh, and, um, acceptable level. I don't want to decrease it just to increase it later, so I, I can't support this. Those are my thoughts for now. Thank you.
I, I first want to acknowledge, uh, every member of council's, um, desire to keep prudent and keep our city on a financial path, a good path, be prudent in our expenditures, and to make sure that by doing so, we can continue to provide the services to the community that the community expects. So I just want to acknowledge, we're all, we're all coming, uh, at this with that same, same desire, but with different perspectives. I, when I, I look at the reserves, I see that they're considerable. And, and as Councilmember Coletti pointed out, the city, I, in the not-too-distant future, has been in terrible shape. And in regards to reserves, you know, essentially near, near zero reserves. And they, seven million, it's approximately thirty percent of our, um, operating budget out of the general fund. And considering the times we're in, I'm, I'm quite comfortable with that. I'm, I'm concerned, and I, I heard the comment, preserving our capital program. And I agree with that, and I agree that we need to, to preserve our capital program because we have, that's our grants. Eight monies are contingent upon those programs. But I'm not hearing that any of those programs are in jeopardy. What I am concerned about is, uh, I don't want to imperil our human capital and our employees that really, uh, that have to meet the bills every month. And so I don't want to wait another quarter to see if it's, it's better. Are we taking some risk? Yes. But I think our employees, uh, are, are important. And for this amount of money, uh, to me, there's, there's no question. Uh, they need to pay their bills just like everybody else, so I'm, I'm in full support of this. Uh, they need to pay their bills just like everybody else. So I'm, I'm in full support of this budget adjustment. And I see everyone has had a chance to speak. So this is the second go around. Councilmember Pedori.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, and I had an opportunity to hear everyone, uh, speak. So, um, I, I think there's two important things here. Uh, one is, um, the, the, the city staff are, are actually the, the, the biggest assets that we have for the city. And it is, we should recognize the fact that staff morale is important. We should recognize the fact that the employee associations, uh, is, is, uh, are all the associations that have spoken today and, and the fact that, uh, we have, we essentially, uh, are working with those associations to make things happen. Uh, when the associations mention that they are flexible to what the city is, uh, allows, is proposing, we should honor that fact. Uh, and, and that allows us to negotiate in good terms in the future. Uh, when, uh, this particular proposal is essentially for one quarter, uh, and I actually heard somebody from the association say that they're open to actually revisiting this in the next quarter. So to me, this is a manageable risk at the end of the day. A- and this is only a risk for one quarter. And there is a, there is a clear indication that the associations will work with the city, uh, to uh, partner with the city to move things forward. So to me, this is a yes. Thank you.
Councilmember Emilio.
I'm, uh, ready to make a motion, uh.
Please.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to introduce and hold the first reading of a draft ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2021 operating capital improvement budget in direct publication of an ordinance summary approved by the city attorney.
I'll second that. May we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Councilmember Pedori?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti?
No.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
And Mayor Peake?
Aye.
Motion carries five to two.
Thank you very much. We'll now take a, uh, a short break and resume at 8:45. It looks like, uh, everybody's back. And hopefully we have Director Hannah with us. We'll, as soon as she.
Mr. Mayor, uh, uh, your administrative services director has, uh, uh, agreed that, uh, I should be the labor, take the laboring or here uh, in terms of presenting this item. And then she can join in and correct me and add to what I have to say.
Excellent. So we are now handling, Mr. Laredo will handle, uh, agenda item 11B. Repeal and replace resolution 20027, implementation of measure L.
And also the first read of an ordinance to implement, uh, measure, measure L as well. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this item, uh, presents two related, uh, aspects that collectively implement ta-, uh, ballot measure L. Ballot measure L was the one half percent sales tax increase that was approved by the voters on November 3rd, this, uh, this past month. Uh, if there were subtitles for agenda reports, I would borrow from Dickens and call this the tale of two taxes. Uh, the topics that we're talking about are really mundane. Only a tax accountant could enjoy this. It's the difference between a transaction and use tax and a uniform sales and use tax. This, what we present to you are a resolution that is to repeal and replace resolution 20 dash 027. And separately, an ordinance that will amend the Pacific Grove Municipal Code, Chapter 6.07, which is the sales tax. Together, these two actions correct an error that referred to Chapter 6.08 when it should have referred to Chapter 6.07. Collectively, these were a harmless reference to Chapter 6.08 that, uh, can be corrected by the council. The plain language of measure L, the ballot measure, was to amend the current 1% sales tax to increase it to a 1.5% sales tax. The municipal code, Chapter 6.07, by definition, labels the city's sales tax. Chapter 6.08, which was the, uh, erroneous reference in the resolution, addresses the uniform sales and use tax. Those are references that are confusing. They're ambiguous. And unfortunately, those are state, uh, terms of art used in the state statutes. Your staff, Ms., Ms. Hannah and I have conferred with the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. We talked to their audit team and legal counsel and they assure us that this nomenclature error has occurred in other jurisdictions over the decades. We've discussed with them this path to take together these two actions to correct it. It's an incorrect reference. And what we are proposing to do is to implement the precise language of measure L. Measure L, by definition, asks the voters to agree whether or not, quote, shall the Pacific Grove Municipal Code be amended to increase the city of Pacific Grove's current 1% sales tax to 1.5%? That's exactly what this, uh, proposed resolution and ordinance will do. The error was that it was, it, it, uh, formally referred to the sales and use tax. But what we want to amend it as to, as to be the transaction and use tax. And once again, our code defines the transaction tax as a chapter that refers to the tax, quote, commonly knows as sales tax. So, uh, it is our view that this was harmless error. We have conferred with the Department of Tax and Fee Administration as to this path. And we present this to you as a, an amendment without which we will not be able to implement, uh, measure L. Uh, and I ask that you, uh, take two separate actions, one action on the resolution and a second action on the, uh, uh, adoption of the first read of, of the proposed ordinance. And I will defer to Ms. Hannah if you have any items that you'd like to add to this.
No, I don't have any additional items.
Mr. Mayor, you're on mute.
We'll now go out for public comments.
Mr. Mayor, I see no hands raised.
Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I looked at this, I'm looking at the voter guide that basically had the city's, um, uh, that includes the ballot question itself. And I noticed that the ballot question does not make any reference to either 6.07 or 6.08. But the impartial analysis and then a description of it does. I'm wondering, did, did staff get involved with the Secretary of State? Uh, as regards to the misprint within the, uh, the information that was given to the voters? And whether that would somehow invalidate the vote?
We have not talked, e- e- excuse me, through the mayor. Uh, we have not, uh, had a discussion with the Secretary of State. We, as I noted, we have had multiple discussions with the, the, uh, CD TFA, the Department of Tax and Fee Administration, which is the arm of the state that does implement this. Uh, I do note that the, uh, uh, when the city, uh, proposed this, you know, originally there was a, uh, a severability clause that, uh, allowed a, uh, uh, modifications to be made to, uh, restore the, uh, full force and effect. The, the process that we are following does allow, uh, uh, members of the public to, uh, to, to challenge. They, they, they could, uh, bring a writ of mandate if they feel that what we are doing is in error. Uh, they could bring a referendum, uh, as well. So, uh, i- if in fact, uh, what we are doing is, is improper, there is a path by which people can challenge that. But, uh, frankly, this, I, I believe that, uh, the, the, I, the most important thing is what was the ballot measure? What was the language that people voted on? And that, uh, as you noted, uh, Mr. Coletti, that did not reference either Chapter 6.07 or Chapter 6.08. Uh, it, it, it only mentioned, should the sales tax be increased from 1 to 1.5%? And our municipal code defines sales tax as the transaction and use tax. And that is the, uh, that is the provision that is going to be, uh, referenced if, if in fact this ordinance is enacted and the resolution is passed.
Thank you, Mr. Laredo.
Any other council member wishing to discuss this agenda item? Councilmember Tomlinson?
I'm ready to make a motion, sir.
Please.
Okay, um, I move that we approve a resolution to repeal and replace the resolution 20 tax 027 to implement measure L, voter-approved tax increase. And to hold the first reading of an ordinance to amend the Pacific Grove Municipal Code, Chapter 6.07, to implement the voter-approved 0.5%, the city transactional and use tax increase. And authorize publication of a summary of the measure as approved by the city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, if, if I could interrupt, if I could ask to have that split into the two questions, the, uh, approval of the resolution and the first reading on the ordinance? And to, to have the council vote on each aspect of that.
Separately?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I guess my first motion will be the first one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
May we have a vote, please, Ms. Kendell?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I didn't catch you seconded that.
This, Councilmember Emilio, I, I heard him. He was maybe the loudest, maybe not the first.
Thank you. Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Pedori?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Mayor Peake?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero to approve the resolution to repeal and replace resolution 20 dash 027 to implement measure L, voter-approved tax increase.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
And now my second motion is the second one.
Do we have a second?
I'll second. Please.
Okay. Mayor Peake?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmember Pedori?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero to hold first reading of an ordinance to amend the Pacific Grove Municipal Code, Chapter 6.07, to implement the voter-approved 0.5%, the city transaction and use tax increase. And authorize publication of a summary of the measure as approved by the city attorney.
Thank you. Ms. Kendell, would you put my slides up on the screen, please?
Yes, sir.
We'll go to the next item, which is 11C, amend the Pacific Grove Municipal Code to rescind the cannabis license process approved by ordinance 20 dash 022 and direct preparat- preparation of a resolution to place this matter on the ballot at the next general election. Do we have the next slide, please? So in a nutshell, where are we on cannabis? Council approved the ordinance recently by a four-three vote. City staff supports the, the ordinance, proposed it. The Pacific Grove Unified School District, uh, Board passed a resolution in opposition. The referendum was held and it failed by three votes out of, uh, 1,069. And Pacific Grove voted in the general election in 2016 for legalization of cannabis. And I might add that public, we've heard public comment both for and against, uh, retail cannabis. And because of that, I'd say, this is my estimation is, I'm unclear, and I think we're unclear, where the community stands on, uh, retail cannabis. And what's before you now, it's a recommendation to essentially pause this process and give the community a vote. And I'll, I'll recognize this, this action is not without some risk. We don't know, uh, can't, uh, quantify what that, that risk is, but, um, all our actions have, have some, some risk. And I'll leave it at that. We'll go out for public comment.
Debbie Beck, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. The agenda report for item 8C fails to report critical information that the council should be aware of as it considers agenda item 11C. The registrar of voters examined the referendum petition and found that there were 1,066 valid signatures and that 81 signatures were rejected. And that number of valid signatures was insufficient. The referendum petition missed the mark by just the three signatures that you mentioned. The report doesn't tell you, other than 13 duplicate signatures, why these signatures were rejected by the registrar of voters. I wish to be very clear, the majority of non-duplicate signatures were signatures of registered Pacific Grove voters. Fifteen registered voters had their signatures disqualified because their address they wrote on the petition did not match the address on the file with the registrar of voters. In every case, the address written by the voters and on the voter registration card, they were located in Pacific Grove. We had six registered voters wrote a P O box instead of their residential address. And these signatures were disqualified. Again, all six of these registered voters are in fact voters in Pacific Grove. Four registered voters had their signatures disqualified because their addresses were printed by their spouse and the voter signed only their own name. These voters were largely elderly who signed the petition at their own homes and were attempting to minimize contact by the spouse due to the pandemic. These are real voters who live in our community and care about what our city does. The council should consider that over 1,100 voters had weighed in on this issue urging the council to reconsider the previous actions. The council must acknowledge that under these circumstances presented by COVID pandemic, obtaining well over the 1,100 signatures is a difficult task, but it reveals the depth of concern about cannabis licensing in Pacific Grove. I urge you to adopt agenda item 11C and put this question to the voters in November of 2022. Do not expedite this process before 11/22 as we witness what took place in September without regard to our residents, our business owners, or our public school system. In watching the city of Monterey work through their process methodically of a possible cannabis license, I appreciate the respect they have shown the residents, the business owners, the schools, and those ha- have a vested interest in their city. And the council has the letter and emails from the residents that were disqualified. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Kat Mineo, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor, City Council, members, uh, staff and my fellow public. Uh, my name is Kat Mineo. I'm an attorney with J R G at law, attorneys at law. I'm speaking to you this evening on behalf of Rajah Enterprise LLC. I'm one of the applicants in this, uh, application process. We would like the council to consider the financial implications for the applicants if they decide to postpone this application process. The announcement that the application process would be put on hold came the immediate morning following the deadline for submissions. And the email from- And the email from Mr. Norrie stated that if significant signatures are timely submitted on the petition, the effective date of the ordinance shall be then suspended until further action on the referendum is taken as required by the elections code. It's our understanding that the petition did fall short of those required signatures. For us, it was quite a shock to our team, given the time, expense, and preparation that was involved with the submission. The collective effort included securing a location, a lease agreement, visualizing and presenting the architectural components of the project, preparing detailed information to demonstrate both the financial viability and the neighborhood compatibility, as well as the hope of fulfilling the desire for a retail location that was demonstrated previously by the voters of Pacific Grove. It's our position that if the application process does move forward, regardless of which applicant is selected, that the city of Pacific Grove would find itself with a benefit of job creation, community collaboration with current businesses and nonprofits, and an expanded revenue stream. We would therefore respectfully request that the council permit the ordinance to remain as enacted and to allow this application process to proceed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Stephen Lilly, you have the floor.
Welcome. I think I'm unmuted, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have a slightly different take than the previous two speakers. Mr. Mayor, my name is, and members of the council, my name is Stephen Lilly, I live at 184 Lighthouse Avenue. And I speak to you tonight as a private citizen and not as a member of the Planning Commission, I need to make that clear. Two days ago, I sent you a letter requesting that you repeal the cannabis ordinance that was enacted by the previous council on September 16th. I do support the first speaker's support of putting this on the ballot. But in terms of the ordinance, I do this, I say this because this ordinance represents or has some very serious procedural flaws. For example, and I mentioned those in my letter. For example, a selection committee is to be formed with three staff and two city council members, which will have decision-making authority, not making a recommendation, but decision-making authority to approve a single licensee. However, this authority infringes upon the use permit rule consigned exclusively to the Planning Commission and the city council upon appeal. Because part of the committee's deliberations will include use permit criteria is the reason why it so infringes. This would also put the Planning Commission in the awkward position of having to ratify committee decisions. There are other problems, the ordinance says nothing about the selection committee having to comply with open meeting laws. Well, really, I mean, that's, that's not good. The ordinance allows two council members, two opportunities to make a decision on an application in separate regulatory settings. In the event of an appeal of a use permit from the Planning Commission of the city council, the obvious question would then be, how can the same two council members sit here and appeal on a regulatory matter they already were involved with to begin with? The ordinance eliminates distinctions between policymakers and staff. Staff who are very valuable for us, and we always welcome their recommendation, but giving them the status to make regulatory decisions on licensed applications potentially places them at odds with the boards and commissions they also staff. The ordinance does not identify zoning districts for the location of a dispensary. The ordinance prescribes distances from schools and other locations, but there is no reference to any zoning designation in the city. And so does this mean that a licensee can apply for a use permit in any zone within the city as long as it's outside of the prescribed distances? And there are other reasons, which I detailed. And so in conclusion, Mr. Mayor, we believe that this ordinance circumvents time-honored land use procedures, and I think we deserve better than that, and thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Barbara Martinez, you have the floor.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor Peake, and thank you, members of city council. Mayor Peake, I wanted just to respond to your comment about that you don't know where the community stands on this issue, and I find that surprising because, well, I don't find it surprising at all, I actually think it's because you didn't include your stakeholders from the beginning. The school district, myself as district safety director, was never asked for any input on our response to having a dispensary open in downtown Pacific Grove on Lighthouse, just 700 feet away from our local elementary schools. And whether or not our community agrees or disagrees with having a dispensary, that's, that's only one point. The point is, is that the voters, the voters need to vote on this. This decision was made in a vacuum, and it was very quick. And I believe that there were procedural flaws in the decision to have a dispensary here. And I completely support bringing it back to the voters no sooner than November 22nd. We, as a school district, had our administration meet today, and on behalf of all of the school administrators and school board, we completely agree that this needs to come back for a vote, and we need more discussion, and that we hope in the future that the city council will include the school district in on discussions before making such decisions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jane Haynes, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I strongly support rescinding the ordinance 2022. And I agree with Planning Commissioner Stephen Lilly's December 14 letter explaining the serious procedural issues and the poor city policy that the ordinance represents. As he mentioned, it actually amends the zoning code by allowing the minors by law to to be located. The code says they can be located only districts. The ordinance allows them to be located outside of those districts. That's an amendment to the, to the the city code, and it should have had as he also mentioned that it makes the planning commission a rubber stamp for what the license committee decides, and that diminishes the authority of the planning commission. And it also, as he mentioned, would send an appeal to the council to arbitrate its own decision. There will be two council members on the selection committee, and if there's an appeal, they'll sit as the judge on that appeal. That's improper conflict of separate duties. Over 1,000 people signed that referendum during a pandemic, and it fell only three signatures short, and more than three of those whose signatures were invalidated have stated their opposition for the referendum. I appreciate Mr. Anee's suggestion, I received a letter from him today that the city paid for an earlier election. He wants the ordinance not rescinded and to hold the election before 2022. I disagree with that because holding the election with the ordinance still in place is not going to correct the shortcomings that Mr. Lilly has explained need to be corrected because the ordinance was faulty. So I urge the council to vote to rescind ordinance 2022 and to set a citywide, city-paid-for vote for November the 8th, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you.
Valentina Valentine, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening, my name is Valentina Valentine Pitchanini. I own a cannabis wellness center located in Carmel, California. And I stood before the city of Monterey in 2010 and in 2014. Before I moved to Monterey County and started working to evoke a need for an ordinance in our community.
Hello, Ms. Valentine. Could you speak up?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I own a cannabis wellness center in Carmel. And I stood before the city of Carmel, excuse me, before the city of Monterey in 2010 and in 2014, before I moved over to Monterey County to help evoke the need for an ordinance. I've had MS for 29 years and was bedridden with two high school students when Stanford Hospital sent me to a dispensary. I raised seven children, caught every one of them smoking pot, and was not a proponent of any benefits of cannabis use due to my brother's experiences in high school. I am speaking in front of you because this today is very reminiscent of what happened in Marin County when I started in 2014, December 2014. They went out and after public outcry, people had already, I think there were seven, maybe even eight applicants, they got into a bidding war, drove real estate prices up unnecessarily, leased property for over two years. And after the public outcry, they pulled the ordinance, put a ban in place, and now here they are, two years later revisiting the issue again. And I just am speaking on behalf of people that go out there and trust the city, that people are paying rent on properties due to the the issues that you've presented for your RFP for Pacific Grove. I see many of your patients, and you are losing tax revenue dollars. And I believe that if you have something more than a pot shop and someone's able to work with that dispensary, I think they can create much-needed tax revenue dollars that PG needs. And so I'm just sharing with you. I am a pioneer, I've been in the business longer than anybody on the peninsula. I was the first to have a nonprofit mutual benefit corporation with the state of California in Monterey County. And I see my time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Inga Lawrence and Doimer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to say that we can't collect tax revenue dollars with the flawed ordinance. I'm a medical marijuana user, yes. I'd like to thank the mayor for always wanting a vote on cannabis and voted against the ordinance. It wasn't you who brought the procedurally flawed ordinance up, but staff. In the interests of the entire city, without further division in the community, rescind the flawed ordinance. obtain a clear mandate of voters by putting a measure on the ballot. Giving yourselves and we, the public, time to sort through any issues and follow due process. This is in the interest of equality for all and transparency. I agree with Stephen Lilly and definitely Jane Haynes. This, you cannot collect the tax dollars until that. This community benefit is just program that was, you know, in the ordinance is just a flawed process. Do what's right. Get the end product right, please. This is in the interest of really unifying and equality in Pacific Grove. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nico Inea, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Hello, thank you, Mayor, City Council, city staff for hosting this meeting tonight. I'm one of the applicants in the current RFP process to win a dispensary permit in the great city of Pacific Grove. But tonight, I'm here to speak as a multi-generational resident of Pacific Grove, not as an applicant. I would like to express my concern about the city rescinding ordinance 2022, which allows for the sale of cannabis. In my multi-decade career as a cannabis operator, both on the business and policy side, I've seen many cities in the position you are in today. There is a silent majority in the city that is in favor of adult-use cannabis, which was blatantly evident in the vote for Prop 64 in the 2016 elections in which Pacific Grove residents voted 69% in favor of adult-use cannabis, which was higher by 11% than the state average. I urge you, the council, to follow the mandate of the voters. It is unbelievable to me that in a time of pandemic and catastrophic economic loss, that you, the council, are consciously opposing the voters' wishes and refusing to allow a dispensary to operate in the city. With small businesses closing every day, hundreds of people being laid off, you are only exacerbating this decline by not allowing a dispensary. A dispensary would employ 20 or more Pacific Grove residents and potentially bring the city's general fund more than $700,000 every fiscal year. You, the council, have a narrow opportunity to make a true difference by allowing a cannabis dispensary. If you do not move on this now and push it to the 2022 elections, by then, the city of Monterey will more than likely already have issued multiple dispensary permits and be collecting tax dollars from the sales of cannabis. These dollars will be coming from Pacific Grove residents. In fact, Pacific Grove residents are already able to order cannabis to their doorstep or go to neighboring towns to purchase cannabis. Cannabis consumption won't change with a dispensary in the city of Pacific Grove. The largest difference by allowing a dispensary in the city is the city will have the benefit of collecting the tax dollars and be able to regulate and monitor cannabis sales. You, the council, have a fiduciary duty to your residents to safeguard their interests, both financially and administratively. By rescinding ordinance 2022, you are allowing the unregulated purchasing of cannabis in your city and not attempting to collect the tax dollars associated with those sales of cannabis. For the sake of our residents, I recommend the city council explore the concept and not
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
John Murphy, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm speaking as a resident and not as the chair of the Planning Commission. I support rescinding the ordinance. I also would support a community-wide vote in November, two years from now. And separately, I support the persuasive arguments that Steve Lilly has made that clearly show that the existing ordinance is fatally flawed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wendy Giles, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I am calling in because I am still opposed to this current proposal, and I ask you to rescind it. The residents of this city deserve to have the opportunity to vote on this issue and have the due process of review, like any new business venture. How is it that since 2016, this dispensary endeavor was not ever appropriately vetted? And now it's, again, we're in a hurry up and do this scenario. And I don't understand why anyone thinks that hurrying up and doing something is a good idea. It is proven time and time again that not following the process always has a trouble always has a troubled and litigious outcome. Just like the short-term rentals and many other things that the city has pursued, which resulted in a lengthy and divisive outcome in our community because it was not managed correctly at the city level since its inception. So here we are again, trying to fast-track something in an unknown enterprise with zero real financial, social, and impact studies. This is not the time to rush anything through without all of the active input of all of our community residents. And when I say community residents, I mean people who actually live in Pacific Grove, not in the outer communities or have family affiliations here. I'm talking about actual people who live at our community residence. So I would encourage all of you to really look at all of these fictional numbers that are being put forth of this estimated revenue. It is far less than it was, it's being projected. And as far as I can tell from my own personal research, there are four dispensaries in Marina, nine dispensaries in Seaside, one in Delray Oak, two in Monterey County. And Monterey, which is going through this whole process right now and vetting it, could have four or five, which would bring Monterey County area to what, like 20 dispensaries? I think that that should suffice cannabis users, medical and social. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Dave, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dave. I'm an attorney on behalf of one of the applicants in the recent retail cannabis application. I'd like to address some of the concerns of citizens and let them know that there were safeguards put into place specifically with the states. So City Pacific Grove chose to increase what the state's requirements were for the buffer zones for schools, parks, daycares, et cetera. State's requirements are 600 and the city chose 700. So there were definitely safeguards that were put in place in this matter. And I hope that you guys consider the city's difficult role in the times of COVID, which also is to, you know, how can we survive through this and develop, you know, new stream of commerce, new tax revenue, et cetera. And this was one of those ways that they could do it. So I hope you guys consider that and thank you very much for giving the time to speak.
Thank you.
Steve Thomas, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, Steve Thomas. I'm a resident and business owner in Pacific Grove. Whether or not you think that recreational and medical cannabis is a good or a bad thing really shouldn't matter in the decision-making process with what is before you tonight. If this was going to be such a boon for the city and was going to inject all of the tax dollars that has been discussed, then there would have been a true cost-benefit analysis that would have been done prior to the ordinance being created and brought before you a couple of months ago. There would have been information that would have come out about what the potential tax benefits were going to be, but also what the cost of city services were going to be. And in an earlier agenda item this evening, 10% of your city staff was asked to furlough and there was a lengthy discussion about whether that should go to five. Yet now, something like this is going to create additional staff time, require additional staff to be hired, require additional police training, additional police to be hired to be able to work around the ordinance itself and the actual, the actual beginning of the business. And to the best of my knowledge, there has been zero citations given for all the hundreds of people that are walking around without masks. And so I guess one trumps the other in this situation, and that's disappointing. You can put this out to a special election if the, again, if you're going to do a cost-benefit analysis and it's going to show this gigantic boon in tax revenue, then that should cover the cost of the special election. And you put it out to the voters, but I don't see that happening here. And so I must ask you to follow the lead of the school district, the many citizens and the folks that worked so hard to get the referendum put together and get the 1,066 signatures. In addition to the 30-plus signatures that are voters that were disenfranchised. And I'd ask you to just simply put it out to a vote of the people and allow the proper process to go forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Christine G., you have the floor.
Welcome.
You'll need to unmute yourself. Christine G., you have the floor. Okay. I'll pause that and move to Mr. Mo Amar.
Welcome.
You have the floor, Mr. Amar.
Good evening, Mayor, member of City Council, Mo Amar, Civic Grove Chamber of Commerce. In my 28 years at the chamber, I must have worked with at least eight police chiefs. And I've enjoyed working with every one of them and it's been a rewarding experience. I'd like to address something that hasn't been talked about this evening or brought up before you, and that is the individuals that have signed the referendum. One specific person is a former police chief who was the chief in the city of Pacific Grove for seven years by the name of Darius Engels. Mr. Engels decided to stop by the Chamber of Commerce on his own and volunteered to sign the referendum. Chief Engels provided his name, his signature, the city he lived in, Pacific Grove, and the street where he lives. However, Chief Engels, due to the anti-law enforcement sentiment, did not feel comfortable in providing his street address. He did not provide the number. Now you can debate whether Mr. Engels lives in Pacific Grove or doesn't live in Pacific Grove. And I know that the Elections Department in Salinas does not know who Chief Engels is. However, if you visited any merchant, any restaurant, any business in Pacific Grove, they're fully aware of who Chief Engels is. He jointly owns a company by the name of First City Real Estate, and they manage over 200 homes in the city of Pacific Grove. So as a resident of Pacific Grove and as a Chamber of Commerce president for the last 28 years, I only address you to take into consideration that Mr. Engels is one of the people that was encountered in this referendum. In closing, I want to welcome Councilmember Peduri and our council members, all the new council people that have joined us, and hope that you will listen to the people and put this to a vote of the people. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Christine Gruber, you have the floor.
Okay, I think I fixed the button now. Can you hear me? Yes. Okay, my name is Christine Gruber. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. I would like to say my husband was one of the people whose signature was denied because we live across the driveway from where he grew up. And we have tried and tried to get his address changed, and he gets double jury duty summons also. So looking at that situation and going ahead and declining all those signatures doesn't seem fair. The other thing that I would like to say is Pacific Grove voted yes, they would like to legalize pot use in California. Does not mean that they want it in their backyard. So there's just a lot to think about and not jump to try and get revenue where I don't see exactly how the revenue is going to come in. I would rather see us look at other options, like things to keep all these tourists that are coming busy. Maybe bring back the glass-bottom boats. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Esther, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. My name is Esther. Hello, Mayor, council, and city staff. I am speaking in favor of the current RFP process and to not rescind ordinance 2022. This could be the safety net that was discussed earlier in item 11A. This could be the conclusion to the budget deficit and adequate and provide adequate pay for city staff and eliminate the need for furlough. The city's current reserve fund has $7 million. $700,000 a year at a minimum would be collected from cannabis gross receipt tax. This would be an increase of 7%. Moving forward would be the wise and prudent decision towards the overall. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor, I see no other hands raised at this time.
Bring it back to council for discussion. Any thoughts? Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first, let me just say revenue does not and should not trump due process. I want to, I want to mention that right away. You know, the right to petition government for redress is one of the five freedoms enshrined in the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. The referendum is one way to achieve redress at both California and our city charter provides for it. The proponent of the referendum, in my estimation, certainly met the threshold of redress, petitioning the government to reconsider the ordinance that was passed. Now, I agree also with Mr. Lilly's comments. There are structural flaws with ordinance 2022, especially how it impacts just primary, you know, zoning and how, where these uses would be allowed. I think fundamentally, the ordinance was rushed. There were, you know, during the candidate's forum, when this question was asked of us, that's what I said. I said it was rushed and it was a disservice to the community to rush it. We have an opportunity, thanks to the residents who went out of their way to petition their government for redress, to make this right. And I think we should follow Monterey's lead. They are setting out on a very methodical and thoughtful way of engaging the public on how an ordinance, a cannabis ordinance, might be developed. We didn't do that. And that's why there's 1,066 signatures that have been signed. It's not because they don't want to see change. I keep hearing that. It's because the community was not engaged. That was the fault. And it's also just a bad ordinance. It does have structural flaws. So I would like to see the reset. That's what a redress does. It is petitioning us to do a reset. We can achieve perhaps an ordinance that the public can embrace and will give them the opportunity to do that through election. But I do believe this ordinance should be rescinded. It's a bad ordinance. It does have structural flaws. We can do a lot better and we need to engage the public. So I do support, I do support this. And those are my thoughts for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Your Honor. Obviously, this is a pretty divisive issue. There's a lot of public support for this. There's a lot of public opposition. I think that, you know, when we made this decision initially, you know, we definitely had the best interest of the community in our minds and thought that it was a good way to create revenue where we needed it. Obviously, earlier tonight, we approved more expenditure. And so obviously, revenue would be a good thing when we're simultaneously expending more funds. So, and I'm talking about the furlough in that statement. So from a legal perspective, I think that the rescinding of the ordinance is perhaps not the correct way to go about what the action is being taken tonight. I think that, that you can make a prospective rule that, you know, going forward, there's not going to be cannabis sales. But I don't think rescinding the ordinance, which has some good components to it, is potentially the right thing to do. And I'd actually like to hear from legal counsel on that, but before I go there, I don't really want to do a Q and A. Just let me finish my, my thoughts, if that's okay, Your Honor, and I'll and then I would ask the city attorney to speak.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And so you know, from my perspective, the council members that voted on this item, or not this item, but the item to allow sales, I guess, 2022 ordinance, you know, it was a really long public comment period. We really did debate and research and do all those things to we actually took it from two to one license, which I thought was wise because, you know, you kind of, it's kind of a dip-your-toe-in approach. We didn't, it wasn't a shotgun approach, you know, Seaside has a lot of dispensaries, so I think that we don't really know. We actually don't really know what the revenue would be. It could be a lot more than we're forecasting and it could be less or the same. So it's a little bit, there is, like as the mayor has said tonight a couple of times, this risk in every decision. But I think we had the best interest of the community and the city at heart and the residents. I do agree, I do agree with the perspective that because the voters voted to approve cannabis use in the state of California, that doesn't necessarily correspond perfectly to having a commercial dispensary in town. But, you know, we are the city government. We are the city council. We are the policy board for this council. We're not on the school district board. We're on the city council. So we get to make the decisions for the city, which is our jurisdiction. And so that's kind of where I'm at with it. I don't necessarily think that rescinding the ordinance is, if that's the majority position is to not move forward with it, I think it should be a different method. And then I would give my time to the city attorney to speak to the legal, the legalities of rescission of the ordinance.
All right, well, you can't give your time. It isn't worth that that way. And Mr. Laredo, at my request, wrote this, approve a resolution to repeal and I'm sorry. He wrote the modified ordinance that is before you. So this wasn't something that I did, Mr. Laredo did. Was there a specific question?
Actually, if I may, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Do you want to rephrase the question?
Well, yeah. The question was, isn't there a better way than just repealing the ordinance? And, and that's not what is before you. And I agree that there are better ways to do this than repealing the ordinance, and that's why. And I agree that there are better ways to do this than repealing the ordinance. And that's why this ordinance is presented to you the way that it does. The past ordinance amended a particular chapter, 11.100 of the municipal code addressing the topic of cannabis. And it inserted a retail license process into that code. This proposed ordinance amends the retail, amends the municipal code chapter on cannabis to delete in its entirety the retail license provisions. But it does retain some of the other portions that were embedded in that. And, and in particular, there is, there was a wholesale updating of some of the terms of art, some of the definitions. Adult use, the, the definition of cannabis itself was updated to current health and safety code. New definitions were added for cannabis accessory, cannabis products, collective and cooperative cultivation, cultivation, processing. Those are all addressing that. And I think that even if retail licensing is rescinded, that there's still value in having that clarification on those updated terms. So that's why this ordinance is done the way it, 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 it has been presented to you. It amends the code. It repeals the cannabis retail license process. But it doesn't rescind the former ordinance because your former ordinance still stands. All of our former ordinances stand even when they are sunset. This does propose a wholesale repeal of the cannabis retail license process, though. So I, I, in, in that sense, Councilmember Smith, I agree with you that it should be a new ordinance. And that's what this is.
Thank you. Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to acknowledge and apologize regarding the divisiveness this issue has brought to our community during a pandemic. To upset and agitate our community right now is absolutely unnecessary. My consistent view on this ordinance is that it's flawed. The whole process, or there was a lack of process. And what little there was, it was rushed. The topic of cannabis is a community conversation where we bring multiple stakeholders to the table, hear all of the views, and ultimately, like in every other city that I've researched, it's decided via a vote of the people. So I absolutely support this. And I appreciate the mayor for being responsive, pragmatic, and really answering the calls from our community. Thank you.
Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. I also support this, but I want to, before I talk about supporting this, you know, there was 1,063 registered voter, 1,066 valid registered voters in the city of Pacific Grove that signed that referendum. And we need to listen to their voices. They're registered voters. That's important. And I also feel that if we really want to, in the bigger picture, look at our values, if you look at the values, they're on the website. But the values of being transparent, that's been talked about already. Honesty is important. The integrity. And make sure we continue to keep the community involved. That's very, very important. The community of Pacific Grove. And I, I support the recommendation by the mayor.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few questions for the city attorney, kind of to touch on the area of risk. I will say overall that, you know, my understanding was if the referendum had passed, we would have been given kind of a similar discussion as, as to where we were, are tonight of, of either rescinding the ordinance or asking it to go to a vote of the people. And it's I do commend and thank the, the people who are behind the referendum and going out during COVID and getting all those signatures is, is a remarkable task. It is just 10% of the community, but it does speak a lot. And it is a bummer, I guess, that it was three signatures shy. That being said, we have a legal, I just want to know legally, if we decide to pause or kind of repeal this ordinance, what are the applicants, these five applicants that have, some of them spoke tonight? I don't, I would like to think that they aren't going to, at a city where they would, would later would like to be, you know, awarded a license, that they would be able to handle the two-year delay while we engage the community and, and go through more due process. That they would not take legal action. But do they have the ability to take legal action? I, I'll, that's my question. Is that clear enough?
If I may, through the mayor, I, I understand your question, but I don't believe this is the time or place to discuss that, quite frankly. What is on this agenda is should you repeal the licensing process? You have the authority to repeal the licensing process. You have the authority to do that prospectively. I, I think it's premature to speculate what applicants may or may not do, what theories they may come up with, and, and what rights may be at play under the former ordinance. But quite frankly, that's not on the agenda. That's not before you. So I don't think your actions should be overly influenced by what other conduct may occur into the future. And, and I, I know that may be a little dissatisfying because we can have fascinating debates, but honestly, that's not on the agenda tonight. What's on the agenda is do you choose prospectively to repeal the licensing process by this ordinance?
Okay, I, I agree that you can, you never know what someone's going to do. I guess I just do, I do feel like it's important to make an informed decision on what risk we could be putting the city at legally. If you're not worried about it, then I certainly won't be. So that's good news. And then I will happily support the appealing of the ordinance that I once supported. I will say, I won't repeat myself too much in that I do believe in supporting, supporting having a dispensary at some point in our town. I have a lot of reasons why I think that if done properly and done with all the stakeholders, as Ms. McAdam said, it is better to have a dispensary. It's safer to keep people getting from working with dealers and anyway, I don't want to drag into the, the debate on cannabis pros and cons, but procedurally, we can repeal the ordinance and go back to the drawing board. My big question tonight that I wanted to get answered was, are we going to get hit with lawsuits for doing so? If the city attorney is not worried about that, then that's, that's good, good news.
Councilmember Pedori.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand this is a very divisive issue for, for the city as well. There are opponents and proponents for, for this on both sides. We got here a mixture of them today. I actually wanted to just give some facts and then see how we want to proceed from, from here on. I, I, I do believe that we need to take into account the financial risks that we have with the city right now. First of all, there, there is the pandemic and its fiscal effects. We are in an economic crunch where we are dipping into the city reserves, as all of you know. So this does pose a major financial risk. There's also a new risk now with this second shutdown. And, and we really don't know how, how big of a shutdown this is going to be, or, or are there going to be future shutdowns? Then I also wanted to point out, while this may not be like apparent right now, if you're looking into the, like, two or three years down the lane, the city does have an unfunded liability problem. CalPERS investments have failed to meet the returns for the second consecutive year in 2020. CalPERS has reported about 4.7% investment rate of return, and they had promised 7%. So yeah, I guess what, I mean, one of the CalPERS goals that I read, in fact, is that they're going to hire a new chief investment officer next year. In any case, I'm bringing this up because the city is going to face the impact of this lower turn versus what was promised by CalPERS. And even if you assume that this new chief investment officer was going to get a healthy 7% return, we are projecting that over the next three years, the city's unfunded liability issue is going to balloon up to more than $1 million. And the question now becomes, where is this $1 million going to come into play? And to add on to, I would say, all of these risks that I just outlined, we now have a fourth risk. And I know we can't comment on that at this point, but the city has basically, the applicants have already put in time, money, resources, acting upon the good faith of the city to move forward. And really, we don't know what kind of a risk or liability that, that poses to the city, which puts a city at a really big disadvantage, I would say. So I, I mean, while I, I understand all, all the points here, and I, I, I know that the due process needs to be taken into consideration. I, I, I did want to express the fact that if anything else, the pandemic has shown that we just cannot rely on just property, just TOT, just sales. We really do need an alternative revenue source. And, and, and this revenue source need not just make up lost revenue. They can also help the city with its community and its businesses. And I think the most important point that I want to convey here is that we need to make the city really business friendly. Because this in turn attracts interest from the business community. We will have a, really a quality set of respondents for every RFP that we propose. We'll have a healthy competition between all these respondents. And we really have, will have a lot of choices or solutions that will drive the quality of life for each citizen. So I understand the, how, how things are going here and what has happened in the past, but I do want to lay these things down. And hopefully, we can all come to an agreement on, on what a better step can be from, from, from a overall standpoint, not just repealing the ordinance. Thank you.
Councilmember McAdams.
I'm ready to make a motion, Mayor.
Please.
I move that we introduce and hold a first reading of an ordinance to one, rescind ordinance number 20-22 cannabis sales pursuant to a cannabis retail license and to direct that the publication of the ordinance be satisfied by publication of a summary approved by the city attorney.
I'll second.
It's yours, Joe.
Okay.
Second. Council, discussion on the motion, councilmembers.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to say that on, on the recommended actions, that there's also a third sentence that's not numbered, that says, direct staff to prepare a resolution to place the matter on the ballot at the next general. And so I'm wondering if, are we gonna? Well, first of all, there's no language for that particular item at this point, but I'm not sure how, how you, how you would like to handle that, Your Honor.
Well, let's ask the maker of the motion if that was intentional omission.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. I'd like to include that as well. Can that be a a amendment?
And let's see, who seconded?
I seconded, I think I seconded. Yeah, I seconded it in yes, the, I, I agree, direct staff to prepare a resolution to place the matter on the ballot. The next general election to be held November 8.
Mr. Mayor, I, I have to comment that that statement is somewhat ambiguous. I honestly, I don't know what the matter is that would be on the ballot. Are you this action would be complete by the amendment of the the retail license process? But I'm not sure what would remain to be put on the ballot to be helpful to the health and clarity.
All right, well. I see a number of hands raised. Councilmember Coletti, some suggestions. We're still a discussion of a motion, which includes the three parts.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Mayor. I say we forego the direction for placing a resolution on the, on the ballot or developing a resolution to put a ballot, a measure on the ballot. I would instead like to direct staff to engage with the public on how a retail cannabis ordinance might be developed that we could put before the voters in November 2022. That's a, that's a, that's a whole process. So we're just, if we were to say we want to do a resolution to place a measure on the ballot, that would just be leapfrogging the whole process, which kind of got us in, into trouble initially. So I would say have staff consider how we can get public engagement started on the conversation of putting a measure before the people to enable cannabis sales, if that makes sense to you. So I would forego this third part that Councilmember Smith mentions and just stick with the two enumerated items.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Yes, sir. I, I don't have a a comment about the motion other than I have a procedural question. Because this is the first read, so we'll be doing this again not till January for the second read. In the meantime, the applicants, is there anything that with the process, I, I assume it will stop, right? Because there's another item on here to pick a committee and then pick the, award the licensee. So to, you know, there, there's a lot in motion. And so will our actions tonight pause that? Can we do that legally?
Okay, that sounds like a question, that's a question directed at Mr. Laredo.
Mr. Chairman, that your action tonight will only be a first read. This needs to come back on second read. This would take effect 30 days thereafter. Until that time, this has no legal force or effect, and the existing municipal code does ban the, the existing municipal code has a process in place and applicants before it. And I believe that the city has the ability and, and arguably even an obligation to continue to enforce that. I, I don't see that this action will modify that.
And, and that's my concern. I, I just don't want to keep marching down roads that are and ambiguous for, you know, we want to be business friendly. And so if we're going to rescind this ordinance, you know, why spend 60 days? So now you're saying it's not till January that we do the second read, and then it's 30 days before it's actually enforceable. So for, in the 60 days time, the city, if, if you're, if we're at the same time following the ordinance that we, you know, that may be rescinded and picking and awarding a licensee, it, it gets very sticky and, and more complicated for our citizens and, and divisiveness and all of it. So I don't know that I have the answer, but I just, I'm listening to what you're saying, Mr. City Attorney, in that you're kind of saying that you can do this and, and we can't discuss the risks, but then here are some of the risks that we're going to go But then here are some of the risks that we're gonna go uh, maybe for the next sixty days and pick a licensee and give them false hope or, you know, I, I don't think that's a good idea.
Yeah. Well, uh, if I may, Mr. Mayor, the, the charter tells us what the process is. The ordinance has to occur at a regular meeting. Uh, the uh second read has to be at a regular meeting. There has to be publication between the first and the second reading. And the ordinance is subject to the power of referendum, as we know, and therefore can only take effect thirty days after the enactment on second reading. So that, that's all process.
So may I amend my motion then?
Please.
Great. So I move, we introduce and hold a first reading of an ordinance to one rescind ordinance number twenty dash twenty-two cannabis sales pursuant to a cannabis retail license. And to direct that the publication of the ordinance be satisfied by publication of a summary approved by the city attorney. And number three, direct staff to um work on uh, a cannabis community outreach and return to council with that uh strategy.
And so you're replacing your original motion with this new motion?
Correct.
Do I hear a second?
I'll go ahead and second that, here.
Okay, Councilmember Smith.
No, I, I had my hand up related to uh the election, cause I just felt, I felt that it was premature to to uh do, take that action. So I don't have an issue at this point.
Okay, Councilmember Coletti.
I'll go ahead and let the city manager talk uh first, Mayor.
You had a question for the city manager?
No, I, uh, the city manager seems eager to jump into the conversation, so I'm gonna let him.
Well, I'm, I'm the chair of the meeting, so.
Oh, okay, well, uh.
Better for worse, I'm the traffic cop.
No, fine. I can live with that. Uh, one, one point I did want to make is uh this could be also done as an urgency ordinance, I believe, but it would require five votes, if I'm not mistaken. Is that right, Mr. Laredo?
An urgency ordinance does require five votes. An urgency ordinance requires findings that it is uh needed for public health, safety and welfare. Uh, and, and urgency ordinance uh has a limited effect. It, it only uh, it can only take place, it can only have an effect for uh ninety days? No, I'm sorry, for one year.
I see. All right, I'll, I'll just call for the question then.
All right, we have a um, a motion that's already been seconded. We've had discussion on the motion. At the risk of having further discussion, Councilmember Tomlinson.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor. I, I feel like I was talking to the city attorney and he's answering my questions, but I, I wasn't fully done, so I apologize. Um, I just wanted to, since the, the processes uh sounds like will run at the same time, can I ask this city attorney if he has intentions of picking a licensee and following that process? Um, it, I'm, i- it matters to me on the vote, so I'm curious to know um if, if we're able to delay that. Uh, I would like to be able to do that, know that we're gonna do that.
Hi, Mayor. Point of order here. Did Councilmember Coletti call the question?
Yeah, he did call the question. And let's see, uh, is that a debatable point of order, Mr. Laredo?
No, it is not.
All right, let's, let's have, I'm sorry, uh, Councilmember Tomlinson, let's have a vote on the motion.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bedory?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
No.
Motion carries five to.
Thank you. Uh, we'll now go to addenda item thirteen B. Authorize the city manager to extend the thirty percent discount to the water entitlement price shown on the master fee schedule. Director Hannah.
Your Honor, we're beyond ten o'clock.
Mayor, it's ten, ten, ten.
Ten, ten oh eight. All right, we need uh, let's see, we have uh two items left on the agenda. So we'll need a motion on whether we will finish the agenda or part of the agenda or continue it to another time. Councilmember. I, I see Councilmember Coletti's virtual hand up, so.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move that we continue uh until we uh get these two items finished.
Okay, can, yeah, we're always hung up on that word continue. Uh, continue is to another time, so.
Right, then uh, uh, that we, that we see.
Next agenda items. Pardon?
That we actually address these agenda items tonight.
Tonight, all right.
You know, the, the reason why I do that is, is because we bring staff to hang around to talk to these agenda items. And then at the last, you know, at the end of the night, we say, well, you know, we're not gonna do them. They, they go home. So if we're, if we're putting it on the agenda and staff has hung around to, to speak to it, I think we should just, we should do the, do the business. And uh, you know, we're not gonna turn into pumpkins here, so let's, I, that's my motion.
Do we have a second?
A second.
May we have a vote, please?
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
No.
Councilmember Coletti?
Yes.
Councilmember McAdams?
No.
Councilmember Bedory?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to three.
Thank you very much. I see we're all in complete agreement tonight. All right, let's uh move on to agenda item thirteen A. Water entitlement price. Director Hannah, welcome back.
Dean, Honorable Mayor and Council, um, once again, for whatever reason, my PowerPoint isn't showing correctly, so um, I'm just gonna go ahead and show it in this screen. Um, the Pacific Grove, right, some background, the Pacific Grove Local Water Project began producing water in uh twenty eighteen. It produces waifs, treats wastewater from surrounding homes and businesses and produces non potable water for the golf course and cemetery. This new water source reduced the city's demand for potable water. As a result of the savings, the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District approved an ordinance establishing the city's water entitlement at forty-seven point eighty-eight acre feet. In May of twenty nineteen, the council approved a resolution directing the city manager to sell the forty-seven point eighty-eight acre feet of water entitlements and reserve eleven point five acre feet of the entitlements for affordable housing. Water entitlement rate was established at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars an acre foot or twenty-five thousand dollars for one tenth of an acre foot based on a local market comparison and has been incorporated into the city's master fee schedule. The resolution also authorized a thirty percent discount to assist in meeting city goals, which include increasing the housing supply, promoting visitor services opportunities and encouraging uh renovation. When the thirty percent discount is applied to the sales price, it converts the amount to one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars an acre foot or seventeen thousand five hundred for one tenth of an acre foot. This discount was applicable through December thirty-first, twenty twenty. The following chart provides an overview of water entitlement sales beginning in fiscal year nineteen twenty through November of this year. In the multi-year sales of revenues actually received, we have one point seven five acre feet with point sixty-six attributed to residential and commercial properties and one attributed to affordable from coming from the affordable housing reserves. And looking at the difference in the prices, if um, the, the sales would have been at the fee schedule amount, it would have been four thirty-seven, five hundred. At the discounted rate, it would be three hundred and six thousand two fifty. The total net difference between the two prices was one hun- approximately one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. The city also has a promissory note pending for approximately three point six acre feet with it, with a developer. Those sales um are committed at the discounted rate of six hundred and twenty-five, one eighty-eight. So if we were to look at this at its entirety, the five point three acre feet that have been accounted for would have been uh sold for one point three million. However, it is being discounted to nine hundred and thirty-one thousand for close to a four hundred thousand dollar difference. And looking at some of our history, the average sale price at discount, putting aside the amount on the promissory note was seven thousand eight hundred dot, dot, eight hundred dollars. And because this has passed over two fiscal years, when looking at average twelve month sales, we're looking at a net difference of ninety-five thousand dollars. Without knowing if we're going to have any high um water purchase increments in the next year, we aren't anticipate, we are, we, we can't really anticipate what the amount would be. But estimating based on just prior sales, the net difference would be close to ninety-five thousand over a twelve month period. This would not impact the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget as we placed a conservative estimate in the budget at one hundred thousand dollars. And as of the close of November, we had sold close to eighty-five thousand dollars. So we anticipate that we will be on budget this year with the discounted rate and could possibly exceed the budget amount. Um, staff is recommending continuing the water entitlement sales to meet council goals as well as accommodate any residents or businesses that may have deferred water entitlement sales purchasing due to COVID nineteen. And with that, I conclude my presentation.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment on this item?
I see no hands raised, Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have any council comment? Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so at the October seventh meeting, council was informed that the local water project is losing money. Um, in fact, the local water project fund, the enterprise fund had borrowed six hundred thousand dollars from the sewer enterprise fund to cover the shortfall. Um, at the same meeting, council directed staff to prepare a business plan for the local water project. So my question uh, before I even feel comfortable voting on this uh continued reduction is uh, when are we gonna receive a business plan for the local water project?
We are anticipating bringing that to council in February.
That's coming in February. Okay. So the promissory note that you mentioned, when is payment expected on that? And, and what is that for? Is that for the goodies condos uh that promissory?
I, I believe it is, and I may look to our community development director for additional information. But just in looking at the agreement, it, it becomes effective when they start going through the, the building check process.
What, final inspection or, or what?
Um, it looks like Anastasia is here. She can probably find, provide some additional info, insight.
Yes, through the chair. Thank you. The lighting is odd, sorry. Um, the promissory note um the, the first payment um until um that the building uh process is underway, but payment would be required prior to final occupancy.
What building, are they not building right now?
Oh, I, uh, it is for the, the construction located at five two zero Lighthouse Avenue. Um, so yes, it is currently under construction. Um, the construction process for um that multi-story, uh, multi-mixed use uh building is more complicated, takes a little more time. So there are um various inspection points during the process, but um the concept of uh final inspection or final occupancy um, uh, essentially means no one can um occupy the building until the building permit is, is final and completed. So the, the payment would be required before that final um uh checkpoint in the building permit process.
So up until the point where they get final inspections, they don't have to pay? Is that right? So they can defer payment all the way up till final inspection? Is that, is that correct?
Through the mayor, that, that is what the promissory note um details and it's called, it's final um occupancy. Yes, thank you.
Well, I, I definitely would want to, uh, thank you. Thank you very much. Um, I would want to see that business plan before we decide to uh keep the rates at the lower amount. Simply because uh we don't know how much more debt this project's gonna incur. And uh all we get from that project is the sale of water and the entitlements. Uh, although I believe the entitlements go into the general fund and not into the enterprise fund. But um if, if the uh, if, if the will of the council is to, you know, approve uh this proposal tonight, that's fine, but I, I do want to, I would like to see the business plan before voting on this. Thank you.
Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, and, and thank you, Ms. Hannah. I, I do have a question. I also recall um, in addition to the business plan, uh, we were, we're wanting to um or you, we were discussing a company to take over the management um of the local water project. Do you know what the status of that is?
I would have to defer to the public works director or the city manager on that um to see how that particular piece is going.
Thank you. I'll take that question. We, we don't have a, a, a plan at this point to um uh change management of the local water project. We would like to come back conceptually to discuss that topic with the council uh in twenty twenty-one. Uh, but prior to doing that, we would be bringing back that business plan as discussed.
Great, thank you. Um, and Ms. Hannah, we also discussed having the water entitlement sales um going to a specific fund that would offset the loss at the local water project. Is, has there been any, any movement in that?
I believe we were planning to bring that back with the February item as, as making a staff recommendation to amend the budget to reflect a potential change in, in the, in what would go to the local water project after we complete the analysis.
Okay, thank you.
I want to uh, oh, for, first of all, I support uh this recommendation with one change. It has a sunset clause of December uh thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, and I hope the maker of the motion extends that to twenty twenty-two. Hey, there's a little bit of symmetry in that because when we first implemented this thirty percent discount, if I recall correctly, it was Councilmember Tomlinson who suggested this uh sunset date. And, and here we are to approximately two years later. And so by doing the sunset date in two years, we provide more stability uh to folks that are thinking about uh purchasing water. And I think that's important. I, I can see problems or issues arise if we reduce the discount or, or uh we increase the discount. So I, I think there's a lot to be said for uh keeping, keeping the discount where it is. There's no, uh, my mind, I was part of the discussion, is how we came up with the thirty percent. I don't think there's any magic uh. I don't think there's any magic. Uh, it's not a magic number. It was just, uh, it was a number where we felt that this would help encourage uh a business, you know, our local economy uh as well as uh um encourage possibly some more housing. And I believe that has actually occurred uh in both cases. So, I fully support this. Let's stay the course. And, oh, Mr. Uh, Councilmember Coletti, so we're selling a piece of paper to uh the developers on this uh dance uh Silvestri. And so, if they um don't have the funding and are unable to consummate that sale, then I I don't, then we keep that piece of paper and we sell it to somebody else. And yeah, that's my thought. We don't lose anything. Councilmember Pedori.
Yes, I I had a um, I actually had a question. Um, so it seems like we're charging a certain fee to get this water entitlement going. Uh, it seemed like it's not, at least to me, it appears that it's not met the goal uh that it's looking for. Uh, do do we think that uh probably we should lower the fee in any case uh to help assist uh with the with the Rena needs, uh which is something that we need to look into?
Who, uh, would you like to direct that uh question to Director Aziz?
Yeah, yeah, preferably, yes. Thank you.
Our city manager.
Mr. Mayor, if I could address that point. Um, the uh, the, when, when the uh city council subcommittee reviewed water, a policy and water pricing, it did consider the effect of of the water pricing on on of needed housing uh and for low income or subsidized housing. And the council decided to recommend that a separate price for subsidized housing would not be appropriate. Uh, because uh if the city chooses to, it could loan or give a separate grant of funds to pay for the water increment for that housing. But that way, the value of the water would be properly priced. And that's important because depending on how a subsidized housing project may come about, the city may have a match matching uh grant requirement. And if the city both gives water away, that would not be recognized as a grant. And the city would still have a matching requirement. So the thought of the subcommittee at that time was to charge the full price for water, as it would members of the public and any other category, and entertain grants to subsidize that as a separate contribution for that project, rather than tinkering with the pricing of the water for the the that housing.
And if I could ask a follow-up question, then. Uh, does it, is it fair to say then that um um we're prioritizing, I mean, based on the structure that's in place right now? Uh, is it fair to say that we're prioritizing um low-income housing needs through how we have it right now? Uh, so if if there's a two proposals coming in, one for low housing versus one which is not, then the low housing will will get effect uh for, will be prioritized?
Well, I'll answer that is we have water for sale, whether it's for expansion of a business or uh low-cost housing. Most of the housing that's gone up with these water sales has been accessory dwelling units, which is recognized by the state as affordable housing.
Okay, um, thank you.
No shortage. Did you have any further?
Um, no, I think I I need to um delve into this more, but at this point, no. Thank you.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, I I'll just add to that, that it to uh to what's already been said about the low-income housing is we have uh water entitlements uh in a different bucket for houses, uh housing that meets that uh low-income housing uh measurement, so that we wouldn't, what we didn't want to have happen is we put all the water we had up for sale and it all got sold. And then, because because low-income housing projects take time. And we didn't want them to come to the city and wanting to develop, and we've already run through it all and sold it. Um, so that is carved, there is a, I think it's ten acre feet carved out. My other comment is that um, I, yes, Mayor, we we chose to do this thirty percent discount. I think it's been in effect for a year, maybe fifteen months with the sunset of this December. Um, the concept at the time was let's stimulate development. Let's offer it at a discount, get people to come out, redo their houses, you know, uh be friendly to businesses and and sell this water kind of quickly if we could. And then, you know, a- after that time, put it back at full price. Um, that, I feel like it's been a steady drip, you know, as far as who's come and who's uh been taking advantage of the water. And it was not this stimulation of demand and and it it was good. It's been great for our city because we had certainly so many years without water and no development. So uh, due, due to what we've actually seen happen, I think continuing it at the thirty percent discount is a great action. Um, and I also uh staff, you know, kind of brought up the point of due to COVID. I mean, there's probably a lot of people during this last year who might have wanted to take advantage and um and that wasn't an option just due to all the limitations. So I I want to continue the thirty percent discount for the water entitlements as recommended. Um, I I suppose we could do it for two years. I don't see the harm in doing it for one and then looking at it again in twenty twenty-two.
Councilmember Smith.
Uh, I was going to move the recommendation, Your Honor.
Please.
So so moved, Your Honor. Move the recommended action.
Second.
Discussion on the motion, Councilmember Coletti.
Yeah, real quickly, I, uh, just to answer Councilmember Pedori, I, uh, Councilmember Tomlinson mentioned an allocation has been set aside for uh low-income housing or affordable housing. I think that's somewhere around fifteen acre feet. So I think that's still in effect. Um, I do agree, however, though, that with Councilmember Tomlinson, this water is not, it's not moving. The, I mean, there's the sales have been pretty uh, uh, been pretty meager. So maybe we want to think about somehow re-incentivizing this, whether, and if we're going to carry paper for a condo developer, uh, maybe we can carry some paper through maybe a loan uh for uh for residents or small business owners who want to get access to the water but don't want to full pay a full freight even at the discounted rate. So maybe we could look at that at another time. I'm ready to vote.
Ms. Candell, would you give us a vote, please?
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Pedori?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Will now uh go to item thirteen B Cannabis Retail License Selection Committee, Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to first start with a question to the city attorney. Thank you. Mr. Laredo, in light of recent council action, can you please explain the city's obligation with the current cannabis ordinance?
Well, the existing municipal code has not yet been amended. We do know that there's a first read and is likely to be amended into the future. Uh, that is not, that change does not yet take effect. We have an existing municipal code uh and and uh applicants have um completed the process to to have their uh license applications be considered. And I believe that the the city has an obligation to to consider those.
And can you explain what might happen if the city decides not to take action by moving forward with this process?
Any applicant that has complied with the existing process has a right to have uh their applications considered. And that can ripen into a vested right.
Would that be for one potential applicant or for the balance who applied?
Every applicant, they're, all applicants are equal. They all have an equal right to have it considered at this time.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, Mayor, this item comes before you. This has been on the agenda several times, as you're well aware. Uh, the current ordinance requires for a cannabis selection committee comprised of five members. Three of the members of the selection committee have already been announced. It is myself, it is the community development director, it is the police uh chief. Um, I am asking again for the city council to name two members to complement the selection committee. The city has received five applications. Uh, the contracted subject matter expert H D O has reviewed those applications for completeness and has um commenced the process of assigning a score. It is anticipated that the selection committee committee could meet as early as the last week of December or early January to review the applications and force rank them according to the code. Uh, that's the end of my report. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Do we have any public comments?
Uh, yes, Mayor. Uh, Debbie Beck, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Hello, um, I have a quick question, and this might be too legal. I'm not really certain, but you know, the summary was presented September twenty-first. The referendum um summary was approved on September twenty-ninth, and yet applications were being submitted up until October twenty-second. I just have a question about that, why applications were being submitted during that time, especially since an ordinance was not in place for the first thirty days after the approval.
Thank you. Any other?
Yes, Anthony Tersol, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Okay, I see the mute button. Thank you. Um, I wanted to comment on the process and the alternatives that are available. Uh, obviously, you need proceed with uh what the ordinance, current ordinance says. And it just seems to me that um you, you can proceed as was originally intended by the vote of the council back in September. And the people who failed to get their signatures are certainly free to pursue the process in the future of trying to get a referendum. And so you could uh do what council voted on. And in light of the fact that seventy percent roughly of the population has voted in favor, it's likely that that referendum will fail. We don't know. But you don't need to stop your current process in order to do it. And it just seems to me this is similar to uh what just happened in our national election, where the people who lost are saying we're the true representatives of uh our population and our voices weren't heard. And so you need to redo uh the votes in Pennsylvania or Michigan. And it seems to me you're doing something similar. You're saying, oh, there's a bunch of people who are against this, and they're the true representatives of P G. Now, I don't have a horse in this race. I've, I've been in the uh dispensary once just out of interest. I have no plans to spend any money there. And I think the monetary uh aspects of it are secondary, but it's really a question of process. And should you pursue uh something, you know, you you've entered into this process and now you're saying, oh, there's a bunch of people who are against it. Well, you lost in September. It was considered very carefully. And so you should proceed with what you're doing. You should appoint a committee. And if the referendum wants to get more signatures, they can. They can do the process again, but to but to say, oh, well, you know, the election department should have known those people lived in P G. That's sort of doing what what people have been doing all across the country, saying, oh, well, only legal votes should count. So I I just think you're setting a bad example in trying to relitigate this. And that's just my opinion. So I I think it's clear you should appoint the committee, you should proceed. And if the citizens want to do a referendum, let them. But, you know, it it just seems wrong what you're trying to do in overturning the the previous will of the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Wendy Giles, you have the floor.
Welcome. Good evening again. Um, I find it very interesting um that there seems to be so much concern about the applicants and not very much focus on the actual residents of the community who organized this petition drive and referendum. So um I just want to assure um whatever, whatever is the legal process that the same group of people who oppose the way that this proposal was put together, which was messy and does not serve our community to the best that it could. Like I mentioned in my earlier comments about Marina, Seaside, Delray Oaks, and Monterey County, and soon to be Monterey. You know, um, the city of Pacific Grove has been asleep for the last almost four years on this. So let's, let's, let's get this together this time and not waste a good opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Nico Inea, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, in regards to an opportunity for the public to speak out, I would just like to dispel this myth that the public didn't have any opportunity to speak out. There were two public council meetings where there was the availability for the public to come and speak and voice their opinion. Another question I have for the city manager is if this process moves forward or doesn't move forward, what happens to the nine thousand dollars that the five applicants paid to the city? Will that be refunded? That is all.
Thank you.
Uh, Inga Lawrence and uh Doimer, you have the floor.
Welcome. Hey, Sandra, Mayor, City Council. The citizens never got the right to vote on whether we wanted legal cannabis in our sales in our city. We voted on legalizing it for the state of California, yes, but we never got the right to vote. Did we get a right to speak? Yes, we overwhelmingly spoke at city council meetings for those two for the flawed process. But council ignored us. That particular council ignored us. So I did not feel represented by the last council. And I believe that Debbie Beck um who circulated the petition, I believe she probably has some legal recourse too. And I think that should definitely be considered. It's time to take a pause on this. Nothing's really going to happen till next year. And selecting someone and continuing with this, just, this is ridiculous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Don Murphy, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and and council members. I'm uh speaking again, just just as a resident. I've been watching carefully tonight. I've been watching carefully tonight, and it seems to me if you go forward with choosing the committee and following the course set out by the, by the existing ordinance, you're in direct conflict with the decision you made earlier to rescind the ordinance. So I guess I don't understand what's likely to happen where these two conflicting, you're on two conflicting courses of action. And I was just hoping Summit could spell out to me. Given the timetable, we, we know that you'll have a second read in January. And if that passes a 30-day period, and then at the same time, an applicant is perhaps being selected. So I just don't understand what's going to happen, and it doesn't make logical sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We'll bring them back for council discussion.
I just had a hand raised, Mr. Mayor. Do you want to take that?
Yes.
Lisa Chione, you have the floor.
Welcome.
There, now you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Lisa Chione, I'm sorry, I was a little slow on that. I just want to, to say, I voted to legalize cannabis. I did not vote, didn't have the opportunity to vote against the the faulty ordinance that, that was passed a couple of months ago. I certainly expressed my opinion at both the first and second reads, at which time I gave detailed testimony about what I felt were, were the flaws. And I'm kind of horrified at the thought that three signatures was, is all that were needed out of all the additional signatures that were collected beyond what the, what the minimum was. I'm horrified at the thought that, what does that mean about when we vote? That, at least by absentee ballot, if I'm holding a child or a grandchild, or if my arthritis is acting up in my hand, is, is my vote thrown out because, because my signature doesn't look right? And for whatever other reason, somebody filling in their spouse's address. It's the signature that counts. So there's something very, very disturbing about, about the, the way that the signatures on the referendum petition were, were handled. And I, I just think you, you voted the way you did earlier to go ahead with and act on those signatures is correct. And it seems to me this needs to be put on hold until the details are worked out on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Now go for council discussion.
We have one more hand raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, one more.
Esther, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. I would like to raise the point of, since the council is obligated to move forward with the process, if they could create a condition that the winner from the applicants fund a special election to allow the citizens of PG to, to vote. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council, that ends public comment. We'll now have council discussion. Council member Colletti.
Thank you, Mayor. As I understand it, the ordinance 1022 had, was enacted on September 16th. And then on September 21st, proponents of the referendum submitted a request for summary of their referendum to the city clerk, who then passed it on to the city attorney. So that was, state statute allows a three-day window for that summary request for the referendum. So my, I guess my question to the city attorney is, when, when we received applications, did the city actually have authority to accept those applications while the referendum was in play? I.e., when it was going through its process?
If I may, through the mayor, that's a question I haven't been asked. I haven't examined. I don't know that the city did anything other than receive that. I don't know. I don't have an opinion as to whether or not that was a permissible or impermissible act.
Okay, thank you.
Council member Smith.
Thank you, Your Honor. We just voted to, as a group, to repeal the retail licensing process, and that will take effect in all likelihood on January 20th. So it doesn't make sense to select a committee at this time. And if, and I would say that we have, as a council, can wait to see what happens with the second read before we decide to select a subcommittee. Doesn't make any sense. So that's, I think that's pretty clear. Thanks.
Council member Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so this was a lot to do with what, you know, I, I didn't support the last vote because I felt like this, I still had a lot of questions in the process. I would like it to be more clean than it is apparently going to be able to be. But I'm, I'm all, I am supportive of not getting us into more trouble, I guess, than we've already sort of created or gotten into. So I would like to have a go to a vote of the people. The ordinance is going to be rescinded, but this, this double track is the part that's very confusing for me. And I, what I don't want to see happen is we don't pick a committee here, and yet the city still picks an applicant. And I don't know the pros and cons between actually picking an applicant or not picking an applicant. It may cost us more money in lawsuits by not picking an applicant versus picking an applicant. So none of that is, seems to be being able, no one's knowledgeable enough to talk about it. But I will make a decision here to say that we should not go forward with picking an applicant. Or, I'm sorry, picking, designating council subcommittee participants based on two votes ago.
Council member McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I move that we table this item.
Table. Do you want to continue this item to a specific date?
No, I'd like to table this item.
Table it. We'll take no action. Well, we, if, if there's no motion, there's no action. This recommendation dies.
So point of clarification?
Please, council member Tomlinson.
By table, you mean we, it won't come back up again? It's not to continue, different, right?
Correct, correct.
Thanks.
If there's, if no motion is made or a motion's made, but it fails, then there's no action taken tonight. Council member Emilio.
Yeah, thank you. I'll, you're, I'll second that motion also.
I wasn't making a motion. That was the explanation.
No, I mean, I thought councilman, council member McAdams made a motion to table it. But the, the only thing is I, the other thing I wanted to say, even if, if there was a first and there's a second, I just wanted to also mention, I agree with the council member Smith's thing. It seems like we're, it's kind of like we're, we're going in dual directions. We just rescinded this, and that's why I agree with the council member McAdams to table this.
Before we go to council member Padori, I'd like a question. I have a question for Mr. Laredo. So I'm, I'm unfamiliar. I'll plead ignorance to, a motion to table, is there such a thing?
Yes, there is, Your Honor. A motion to table. What you have to think about is a legislative chamber where the, basically the, the legislation is asked to be put on the table, and there's a motion to table, and then there can be a motion to remove from the table. Unless, if the matter is not removed from the table, it is just in suspended animation. It stays on the table until a motion is made to remove it from the table. So a motion to table is recognized under Roberts rules, and it does require a affirmative vote of the body.
All right. Well, thank you, thank you for the explanation. And I just learned something from council member McAdams tonight. Thank you for that. Council member Padori.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm, I'm still trying to understand what is exactly happening here, so bear with me. So does this mean that if you're tabling this motion or not doing anything here, does this mean that the, the applicant is not going to be selected? Or no action, does this imply that until January 20th, or whenever we come back to review what was earlier approved, nothing is going to happen with respect to the, the applicants? I'm not quite clear.
May I, Mayor?
Actually, I think that's a question for Mr. Harvey. Are you asking, council member?
I'm the maker of the motion. I didn't, I didn't give a date. There's no date.
Okay. Well, I thought, council member Padori, I thought you were asking that if we approve the motion, does staff take action?
Right. So, so this is a selection committee. And so if they're saying tabling or basically doing nothing, does the staff proceed to select anybody? Or, or not?
I think that's a question for Mr.
Well, I don't know that I have the ability to not follow the ordinance that's been adopted. I mean, I, I think I have to. I think that the selection, the, the ordinance calls for applications, a review, the selection committee to meet. I mean, if the council doesn't want to name two members to the committee, okay. But I don't see how I have the ability to say to the applicants, "No, we're not going to convene the selection committee and pick one of you." I don't, I don't see under what authority I have the ability to do that. I don't think I have that authority. Unless council directs me to do that, which I think is in conflict with your ordinance. So it's a conundrum.
Council member McAdams, would you like to just modify your motion to include a date?
Yes, but before I do, I, I would like the city attorney to, to clarify. I mean, per the ordinance, it specifically reads that the selection committee is comprised of three staff members and two city council members. So I'm not necessarily understanding the city manager's explanation that he would just continue the process.
If I may, through the mayor, all that is before you, this agenda item, is the appointment of the two council designees to serve on the selection committee. The selection committee is populated by the three members that were designated under the ordinance and selected by the city manager. As to what happens if the processing of the applications is such that it's ready to go to the, for selection, and the only seated members of the panel are the city manager's designation, I don't have a ready answer for you. I do know that, that this, this time and this place for discussion is really for the appointment of the two council selections to that panel.
Great, thank you. So yes, Mayor, I would like to amend my motion. I move that we continue this item until the January 27th, 2021 meeting. Sorry, city clerk.
I'm sorry. There's only one meeting in January, and that's the 20th.
Okay, so then what would the following February meeting be then?
It would be, I don't have a calendar right in front of me, but I believe it is the 3rd of February.
Great. So then amend the motion to February 3rd, 2021.
And who was the second on the motion?
Mr. Emilio.
I was, but I'm not going to second the motion.
I'll second the motion then. Second the motion. Let's see, discussion on the motion still. Council member Tomlinson.
May I recommend that we, because I heard tonight that, you know, January 20th is when we would have the second read, and then there's a 30-day waiting period before, you know, someone else could come up with a referendum. So I'd like to let that clear as well. And actually, you know, if, well, you know, we don't have to be wondering anymore. We'll know, we'll, we'll know all the details. And so that would put it to the February 17th meeting. If I, if I'm doing my dates right, actually, that's only 28 days. So maybe the March 3rd meeting. To table it till March 3rd, or continue it to March 3rd. Just so, so we're sure. That would be my friendly amendment date.
Okay, council member McAdams, do you accept that friendly amendment?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor.
And I second also. Council member Smith? No. Council member Emilio? All right, looks like we're all talked out on this one. Please, may we have a vote?
Mayor Pete?
Aye.
Council member Emilio?
Aye.
Council member Coletti?
Aye.
Council member McAdams?
Aye.
Council member Padori?
Aye.
Council member Smith?
Aye.
Council member Tomlinson?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0 to continue this item until the March 3rd, 2021 regular meeting.
Thank you very much. That brings us to the end of our agenda. It's been a long evening. Thank you, everyone. Particularly, the participants have been online. Have a very pleasant night. Meeting adjourned.